Welcome. The Monday, April 16th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. Pastor Glenn McCraney, U.S. Navy Chaplain Retired, has been kind enough to come and give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. If you could all rise.
And let us pray. Oh God, amid a world of confusing and conflicting issues we are confronted in our daily lives, we seek answers, we seek clarification, we seek for a period of peace and a time of solitude. In the stress of our present world and conflicts, our souls grow weary. We come now in a brief moment of self-reflection and prayer to be surrounded by holy stillness which brings hope and renewed faith in your creation. In this moment, we include our neighbors, people of our beloved Currituck County, and our elected leaders. In our prayers, we sow upon our commissioners tonight the wisdom of Solomon, the patience of Job, and the love of Christ. As they debate, discuss, and deliberate the multitude of issues before them, we pray their first priorities will always be the betterment of our county and the fulfillment of its people's potential. Bless them, guide them, grant them patience. May we, the people of Currituck, always be aware of the needs of our neighbors in these troubling and stressful times. May our lives be guided by what is best for others rather than what is always best for us. In these things, we pray in your holy name and all God's people say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Glenn, thank you. You may be seated. First order of business tonight is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple amendments to the agenda this evening. First, I would like to remove the item number one under Board Appointments, A, the Carova Beach Road Service District Committee, and then move the Commissioner's report to follow directly under Public Comments. So that under New Business, item number C, would be moved under Public Comment or after Public Comment prior to administrative reports.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Public Comment. Public Comment, you're allowed three minutes. The green light means go. The yellow light means you've got a minute left. And the red light means stop. And if you run a little bit over, I will gently nudge you to get to the ending of your comments. So with that, I will ask Ms. Barb Marzetti to come forward. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Marzetti. I live at 609 Coats Court in Corolla. Tonight, I'm here in my capacity as President of Corolla Civic Association, and we and the residents, property owners, and business owners who make up our membership care deeply about Currituck County and about the Currituck Outer Banks beaches. As you're aware, CCA has voiced concerns about how occupancy taxes have been spent as well as the lack of action to prudently regulate development. Our interest is smart management of the Currituck Outer Banks to keep it vibrant and a desirable vacation destination so as to preserve the economic well-being of Currituck County. We believe that we bring a useful and constructive perspective to the issues confronting us. Cumulatively, over $3 billion has been invested in the Currituck Outer Banks since the early 1990s. This has not only enhanced living standards throughout the county but has also enabled the county to maintain low taxes and remain relatively debt-free, but has also improved the economic well-being. While our investments and labors bring in over 60% of Currituck County revenues through property, occupancy, and sales taxes, we don't get much representation for that taxation due to the small number of COBX owners who are registered to vote. We believe that having less than 10% of the vote has, over the years, adversely impacted the management focus and resources brought to bear with respect to COBX and has led to occupancy tax spending decisions that have not maximized returns and which have failed to position COBX to be competitive in the future. We are not saying that nothing has been invested at the beach. We've suggested several constructive projects that the county has taken action on such as the bike path, beach access improvements, and Heritage Park operations, and we are grateful to the commissioners and the county for these projects. Nonetheless, our analysis of how the more than $10 million in occupancy taxes has been spent has led us to conclude that about a third of the occupancy tax spending over the last 10 years is questionable and should be subject to an in-depth review. Quite simply, we believe the county can do better. In the spirit of looking forward and not backward, CCA has worked to develop a roadmap for future occupancy tax spending. A proposed 10-year spending plan we believe will enhance economic growth for the entire county while protecting the county's golden goose, Corolla. That plan that we sent to the county last week contains cogent, data-driven proposals that we believe warrant serious considerations. We look forward to the opportunity to engage with you in thoughtful and open discussions in the next six weeks as you finalize your budget for the coming fiscal year. Following me are a couple other speakers from the beach who would like to talk about specific elements of the plan we presented to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Marzetti. We'll call Ed Cornet.
Hi. My name is Ed Cornet. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Live in Corolla. This is the budget season, and at the last Commissioners' meeting, I was very pleased to hear that you're very concerned about raising taxes. Making government more efficient and keeping tax rates low are good things, but the key to keeping taxes low is to make wise investments of the taxes you do collect to keep property values high. Before 2005, Currituck tax rates were around the state average of 66 cents, but billions of dollars of private investment at the beach during the previous decade allowed this tax rate to be cut in half to 32 cents. But in 2013, the county tax rate jumped to its current 48 cents. Why did that happen? The reason is that although the beach communities are only 10% of the county's land area, they have a third of the county's houses.
They have a third of the county's houses and generate six of every 10 tax dollars. That's $30 million a year. But the best part, from a tax rate standpoint, is that even with a third of the houses, the beaches only use about 10% of the county's service costs. Only 40 kids out of 4,000 in our public schools. Only one-fifth of all sheriff and EMS calls. Less than four out of 100 jail inmates, and very little need for social services. My analysis of the county budget shows that while all areas of the county pay the same 48-cent tax rate, the beach areas receive county services worth an equivalent of about a 20-cent tax rate, while the rest of the county receives county services worth a tax rate of about 70 cents, which is a good thing. Decline in property values in the high-value but low-service-cost beach area drives the average tax rate and mainland tax bills up. But the mainland has the most room for growth. However, this growth comes with the 70-cent tax burden at the current service levels. To grow there and keep tax rates low, we need to help keep beach property values grow. So what I've been asking you for the last four years is to make wise investments of existing tax revenues to keep beach property values high and thus all tax rates low. Encourage growth on the mainland while maintaining a low tax rate. Occupancy tax comes from the beach and is intended to enhance tourism. Invest it to fix the erosion-ravaged beaches, make Highway 12 safe for tourists, and open up all areas of ecotourism, new areas of ecotourism, to stop the decline in beach property value. That decline has continued for more than a decade. During this time, the county received more than $100 million in OT revenues but invested less than $40,000 in beach nourishment. Our competition has fixed their beaches, but the county invested more OT money in a fire hydrant in Grandi than they spent on beach nourishment in 10 years. My concern is that business as usual continues, all county taxpayers are going to see another big increase in three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. Jenny Adams.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Adams, and I live at 790 Crown Point Circle, and I'm also the President of the Crown Point Property Owners Association. I'd like to speak to you about beach nourishment and Connect Corolla. According to data which the Army Corps of Engineers has compiled over the last 50 years, we have lost 100 feet of beach. We have experienced several severe storms over the last 15 years which have further ravaged our beaches. In 2004, the state legislature passed a law allowing Currituck County to raise occupancy tax by 50% and authorized its use for beach nourishment. The increase alone contributed more than $40 million of occupancy tax, but of this, the county has spent less than $40,000 on beach nourishment. Our beaches are by far the major tourist attraction. They have attracted about $4 billion of private capital to buy land, build homes, and businesses. This capital investment generated approximately $400 million a year of spending by more than 1 million tourists. Property taxes, occupancy taxes, and sales taxes generated contribute more than $30 million to the county's budget each year, which is way more than half. Our beaches are in bad shape. Rental homes are struggling, and our competition to the south has gotten tougher. Only the county can organize and fund a comprehensive beach nourishment program to dredge sand from the offshore to raise and widen our beaches. This is done in many thriving vacation communities along the East Coast. This does cost millions of dollars, and if done properly, may need to be done every 20 years, but it's a cost of doing business. If the county had reserved a portion of the occupancy tax from the time of the increase, funds would be available to start improving our beaches now, but that wasn't done. The CCA has proposed a plan to change the way the occupancy tax is spent and begin reserving funds and planning the first beach nourishment project now so that it could begin within five years. Movement to adopt the CCA plan now will go a long way in ensuring property owners that the investments are safe, stem the flow to properties on the market, and stimulate new investment in Currituck County. The commissioners need to take action now to make our beaches competitive again and ensure future growth in our tourist industry. A crucial component of tourist enjoyment of our Outer Banks communities is Connect Corolla Project. In our health-conscious society, our tourists love to walk and bike to the attractions near them. It took three deaths in order to get a comprehensive plan to make this bike path. Please extend, we are proposing that you use occupancy tax to extend this path through major areas that are traffic danger, and this will encourage families and enhance the tourist enjoyment of the Outer Banks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. And Jerry, I apologize for misstating your name. I knew that and still got it wrong. That's all I have signed up for public comments at this time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Ben Wilson, 164 Mariners Way. Now, excuse my clothes, but I'm at an attitude of getting warmer weather. I'm here to speak today again, I think it was my third time before the Board of Commissioners, on beach permits. I was hoping that hopefully the Board would take it upon themselves to possibly amend ordinance 1064, and I'm referring to 1064, Section 5, that it reads, "County residents residing north of the North Beach Access Ramp may obtain at no fee two additional parking passes." I hope in the future that we can change that so other county residents can get those same two additional free parking paths so they can have, if they have family or visitors visiting them on the mainland here or even in Corolla, that currently, right now, that during Memorial Day and afterwards, if they have friends in that have a four-wheel-drive vehicle, they're going to have to pay $50, even if they go down there for one day. So I hope all of you would consider that to make any county resident in Currituck have those same privileges that were given the people on the county residence on the North Beach the same privilege. This past weekend, I mentioned it even at the last meeting, my son and his children came in. If it had been after Memorial Day, we drove down to North Beach to see the horses, and we also did some fishing down there. If it had been Memorial Day, I'd have had to pay $50, or my son would have had to pay $50 for one day to go down on the North Beach. I also see this ordinance, and this is kind of blunt, as almost discriminatory in nature, and that's the reason I'll explain that, is discriminatory because of where I live. I don't live in the North Beach area, but I live in Currituck. Same people who live in Jarvisburg. They're being penalized to where they live. So hopefully, the Board would reconsider this sometime in the very near future. We only have, what, maybe six weeks left before we start charging fees? And I want to mention, I spoke with Ms. Walton. I came down here, and I'm not familiar, what is the official protocol for presenting to the Board a text amendment? She was very helpful, said someone would call me, and I hate to say, no one called me. So hopefully, in the near future, I'll get back with her, with the county, to see what is your procedure for doing it. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. That's currently who I have signed up for public comments. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? I will close the public comments, and I'll move on to Commissioner comments. We're trying a little something different this evening. We're going to try it for a couple of weeks. Typically, our Commissioner comments have been at the end of the meeting, and what I have found is there's usually one or two people left in the room, the folks that are home watching, have already fallen asleep, so they don't really get to hear what we have to say. And I think what the Commissioners have to say is important. So we're going to try for a couple of weeks to move Commissioner comments up closer in the meeting, and then if we feel like this is working, then we will change the ordinance, and this will be a permanent part of our meeting. So with that, if I can, I'm going to begin. Change it up a little bit for everybody. So there's several announcements I'd like to make. I'm going to start with some retirees. We had several folks that have retired from service in Currituck County with over 20 years of service, and I, for one, appreciate their service, think it's been very valuable, and I'd like to let you folks know who they are. John Ayers with EMS, Greg Batters with Public Works, Jason Banks with the Sheriff's Department, Sandy Casey with the Sheriff's Department, Gary Dodd with the Sheriff's Department, Chris Doxy with the Sheriff's Department. Are we hiring sheriffs for any? Kim Dozier Schmidnick with Soil Conservation, and James Minns was our Fire Marshal. Thank you all very much for your dedicated service, and I wish you all well. Moving on, a couple notes with some staff. Our Elections Director, Sidney Banks, achieved the designation of Certified North Carolina Elections Administrator. Congratulations. Our Clerk to the Board, Leanne Walton, achieved the designation of North Carolina Certified County Clerk through the UNC School of Government. She endured four extensive, rigorous weeks of training to achieve that, so congratulations to Ms. Leanne. Tamara Kugler, Jill Landon, Jason Weeks, and Dan Cloudsley will be receiving their Tourism Marketing Professional Certification this weekend at the Southeastern Touring Society Conference, which I believe is in Emerald Isle. I'm so sorry you have to go down there on such short notice. The certification is given to those tourist professionals completing a week-long, rigorous marketing college program presented by STS. A couple notes of some other county staff. We had two telecommunications folks were recognized for their efforts during a recent call to respond to a cardiac arrest emergency in Tulsa Creek Road. Dispatcher Emily Altizer provided CPR instructions over the phone until an officer arrived on scene, while dispatcher Brandy Leary coordinated appropriate EMS and Sheriff's Office units and kept all units apprised of the situation. Both dispatchers are commended for their contributions on this save. Again, it goes back to our first responders are crucial in the county, and we appreciate all the hard work that they do. A couple more things. The new seating area in front of the Whalehead Restrooms is now complete with landscaping and three benches. The new landscaping has been done on the front entrance of the historic Corolla Park and at the restroom facility next to Whalehead. A new walkway has been installed at historic Corolla Park next to the restroom facility to connect the boardwalk on the sound to pedestrian walkways. The Coastal Resources Commission has appointed our attorney, Ike McCree, as Coastal Resources Commission Advisory Council. Couple projects we're wrapping up from the winter. The Corolla Beautification, Landscaping, and Streetscape projects are near completion. Landscaping and walkways at historic Corolla Park restroom facility are near completion. Repairs to Pine Island sidewalk at the public access facility are near completion as well. Scheduling note, April 17th, tomorrow night, there's an open house at Meliak Elementary School from 5:30 to 7:30. We encourage all residents to come. This will be a very, very informative opportunity for you to speak to county staff on a range of topics, including current substation and stormwater. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Hall.
You can tell summer's here, or at least right around the corner, because flea markets are starting. All sorts of events are going on. This past weekend, I had five things on Saturday. I had the pleasure of attending. I think the one I had the most fun at was the Crawford Fire Station where they had their annual barbecue and their raffle. I didn't win anything, though, but I had my ticket, and I stood there, and I waited, and they had many things. But supporting any charity, any fire station, the amount of people I saw in Currituck was outstanding. Folks, thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for supporting everything out there, and that's what makes Currituck great, and I'm glad to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Beaumont.
I, too, had the pleasure of attending the Crawford Raffle. I know our retired Fire Marshal probably had high blood pressure with the attendance level because I have never seen that many people in that Cooperative Extension building. It was truly amazing. And so, as I'm looking at the rate of growth, last year was at their fire station to a packed house. This year was at the Cooperative Extension with a packed house. I guess next year is going to be at the football stadium or the gymnasium, but then we've got to get guns on school property. So anyway, that was a wonderful experience. I had the pleasure of walking away with the black lab. So pray for us, because she knows how to howl. And I want to address a couple of comments made, and I know Commissioner White's probably going to add to this, but comment was made that beach replenishment to the south is done once every 20 years or something to that effect. And relative specifically to beach replenishment or beach nourishment, this Board is in the process of deciding how and what that might look like. But some of the statistics from NAGS Head that I think are kind of important. First of all, NAGS Head plans on beach nourishment every six years. Their beach replenishment in 2011 cost $36 million. They're hoping the next one, oh, let me back up. So that was back in 2011. In the storms in 2016, they lost 30% of the sand that had been placed down on that. They're looking at another redo in 2018, and right now, that's looking at somewhere between $26 and $20 million. So it's a significant effort. Once that's undergone, and not to toot this Board's horn, we want to know what we're getting into before we get into it. And so, the one thing I applaud my fellow Commissioners is that, you know, we need to understand the magnitude of the problem before we just start trying to put Band-Aids on it. And one of the things that was addressed was growth of homes and controlling of the growth, and that's something that this Board has also been talking about and probably needs to get done sooner than later. But I'd like to point out that, you know, KAMA and/or the Army Corps, which are supposed to be helping preserve our beach area, at times really appears to be in conflict with what we're trying to do. And specifically, there are several houses that are being built on the beach, and I'm watching half of the sand dune get dug away and put on the lot, and, you know, I'm curious what that looks like in 10 years. You know, do we now wind up with a house that needs to have its beach replenished? So it is a very complicated issue, and again, you know, we're looking into it because certainly we need to know all of the facts and at least get smart on it before we just start spending money. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont. Ms. Etheridge.
This past Wednesday, I had the opportunity to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners District Meeting in Leespa City with 12 other counties. These meetings offer county commissioners and management staff the opportunity to learn about the latest legislative developments in Raleigh, share information, and network with colleagues, and benefit and learn from others. We also received an update from our association president. Her initiative is 100 counties helping our children thrive. Also, I'd like to report that our Department of Social Service will be conducting an informational meeting on Tuesday, April 24th, at 6:00 PM at their office for anyone interested in fostering and adoption parenting. If you are interested in attending this, you need to call their office at 232-3083. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. Mr. White.
Good evening. Myself and the Chairman recently attended the NC East Alliance, and for those of you that don't know what that is, NC East is an economic development organization dedicated to Northeastern North Carolinas, I've said that several times, development and job creation. And they do some interesting stuff. It was by far one of the more interesting things I think I've attended in a while with the information provided. One of the things they do is they have a program called STEM, and this will interest you and yourself. STEM is science, tech, engineering, and math. The program works with colleges, similar to the COA, and high schools to build real-world programs for kids so they can develop usable skills for jobs. And as far as I know, they haven't moved up into this area yet, so it is something I think you guys can probably work on with them and approach the subject with them. So it would be good, as we're looking at COA, especially with different things going on and different job skills and all the things we're doing in conjunction with them. Another thing was, we were talking about different counties and towns and what they're doing to revive or revitalize their areas, and one of those is internet. As many people in the county know, we've got areas where there's no internet or little internet, and we are currently working on that as a county and seeing what we can do about it. And these other areas have already done that, and they have some other people that we can contact to help us with that. So I pass that information along to the county manager, and hopefully, we can move forward with filling some gaps for our citizens here in this county, especially with respect to the schools, and getting the kids able to use their Chromebooks in some of these pockets that aren't covered. An interesting thing was brought up in the development of these towns, and... An interesting thing was brought up in the development of these towns and redoing them, and it seems to deal with art. Wilson has gigs and gigs, so they put in their own fiber optic network and they have Whirly Gigs as a park. And it has helped revive their town and bring people into it. What was the other town? Farmville. They ended up partnering with a university to bring in some kind of a glass artistry thing and a couple other little things. But their town went from almost empty to only having 12 spaces left in their main street downtown area over the years they've been working on this. And it just so happens, I was watching a show this weekend on selling property in New York, million-dollar listings, and they were talking about the history of Soho. Soho was a downtrodden area, one of the poorest in the city, until the artists move in, and now it is the most expensive area to live in New York City. So, there seems to be some semblance there, some symbiotic relationship between the artists moving in and people moving in. And the reason I bring this up is as we're looking at Currituck Station and what goes in there, you know, what happens with it? So, we're talking with the public right now. We have meetings getting ready to happen, so it may be a good time to talk about how we want it to develop, because right now it's 8,000 people and they're just kind of spread out with 3,000 more homes, something like that, left to develop currently, and no one in sight. So, you know, it would be nice if we could get some kind of community thing going there and take a better approach to that. And also, we're looking at that in Corolla with the boathouse. So, we have the boats going in there, historic boats, and those guys are artists as much as anyone else, and maybe we can look at adding some art exhibits in there as well to garner more interest in it, since it seems to be something people are interested in. And I apologize, I'm going to be a little long-winded tonight and go into some occupancy tax stuff. Since it's been brought up of late, and before we jump into that, I want to preface what tourism means. What's the definition of tourism? And this is according to the Tourism Society. Tourism is a generic term to cover both demand and supply that has been adopted in various forms and used throughout the world. Tourism is defined as the activities of persons identified as visitors. A visitor who is making a visit to a main destination outside his or her usual environment for less than a year for any main purpose, including holidays, leisure, recreation, business, health, education, and other purposes, the scope of which is much wider than the traditional perception of tourists, which include only those traditionally traveling for leisure. So, as we talk about stuff and we're dealing with the mainland and how it relates to tourism, it's not only about getting a beach vacationer here. And the world is starting to recognize this and apply those principles. So, with that, I want to talk about the occupancy tax, the session law. So, we've heard it quoted often, what we can and can't do. And the state says, I'm assuming everyone can read this, "The use of tax revenue. Currituck County shall use the net proceeds of tax levied under Section A of this section." And in the old law, they lined item stuff out, and I have this for you a little bit neater, but they lined out things like tourism-related purposes, construction, maintenance, public facilities, buildings, garbage, and so forth. And they keep going. And so, the new stuff is tourism-related expenditures, including beach nourishment, which they added in. That cleaned up looks like this. "Currituck County shall use the net proceeds of tax levied under Section A of this section only for tourism-related expenditures, including beach nourishment." What does tourism-related expenditures mean exactly? We talked about this at our last meeting. So, tourism-related expenditures, expenditures that in the judgment of Currituck County Board of Commissioners are designed to increase the use of lodging facilities, meeting facilities, recreational facilities, and conventional facilities in a county by attracting tourists or business travelers to the county. This term includes tourism-related capital expenditures and beach nourishment. That's the end of that. So, basically, as we've talked about this before and as the county manager has brought out, we have a pretty wide latitude. And I think the important thing people are missing is when they struck through this stuff, they didn't say you couldn't do it anymore. They just cleaned it up and made it two sentences and then defined that as to how we can use it. And I think it's prudent on our part to invest in Currituck maintenance. We could lose the beach in one good Cat Five storm, and we're right back to where we were before that beach was there. And so, it is prudent, and I would say, I just, we spent a bunch of money in Corolla, and we spent it on the mainland. To date, since 2010 to present, in tourism promotion, we spent $20 million. That money has to be taken out of the occupants' tax collected. So, setting that aside, just the Corolla Greenway in three years, and it's going to be round figures, I'm not going to go down to pennies, was about $1.3 million, a little more than that. We have pocket parts. We have other stuff going on. Beach cleanup, $146,000, excuse me, none of which is in that, doing sidewalks, doing beach cleanup, any of that. Yet, we did it. We have a boardwalk along in the waterfront in the historic park, $66,000. The Greenway to date, between engineering, construction, and Phase Three, 2.8, almost $2.9 million. New signage in Corolla, which looks great, $170,000. Bulkhead repairs in the park, sidewalk extensions in Whalehead at Alborcore Street, Corolla Village Road, walkways to the beach with a handicap ramp. It's an amazing thing. All of which are not specifically delineated but relate to tourism. Obviously, we need our tourists to be able to get to the beach and move around safely. Bathrooms, another $400,000. As I said, we're going to build the boat museum and hopefully attract a lot of tourists and preserve our heritage at the same time. Corova, we spent some money up there, $360,000 on the roads, which are very arguably damaged through the tourism impact of the vehicles that run around up there. The few residents that are there would not do the level of damage that has been done up there. Corova Park, $18,000, which is largely used by the tourists when they're here on vacation. We were able to add a playground there this year, and that was the 18, and then the whole park itself was 495, $495,000. So, all told, in Corova, we've been able to spend nearly a million dollars, $873,000. Adding advertising and all these things we've done, and this is not the whole list, it's about $28 million we spent over there. And Mr. Scallon, kind of question for you that came out of the comments, the bike pass and beach nourishment. So, the bike pass have been asked for for years, and that was a joint collaboration. Obviously, the CCA brought that forward, but the question is, how long has beach nourishment really been talked about? Have they been, before my time, as I've only been here a little over a year, I'm assuming?
To the degree it's being discussed now, it's been in the last probably four or five years.
Okay. So, but the other things have been on their list to check off, have they not?
They have.
Okay. So, you know, it's not that we don't listen to you. As Commissioner Beaumont said, we're adding money in this year to do a beach study. Coastal Science and Engineering may be the firm we choose. They've already familiar with the area. They did Pine Island study, and we don't know anything without engineering, so we have to do that first. We are paying attention. And to think that we have misused funds or inappropriate used funds, there may have been some in the past, I don't know, but I can tell you right now, this board is engaged in paying attention and is not going to abuse that right. If we lose occupancy tax or the state takes it over, that money's not coming back here. All these nice projects that we get to do to better this county is gone. If we have a different Tourism Development Authority, it doesn't work very well. You can ask Dare County and some of the other counties how well it works for them. You know, you have a direct link to us, and we are answerable to you as voters. So, we can be held accountable rather than someone that was appointed to a board as a political favor, or who knows how they get appointed to a board. So, my suggestion to you would be to work with us. We've sat down, we've had discussions, we brought the county attorney over, we went through the budget, myself and the chairman did, early on in our tenure, and, you know, we're willing to have those discussions, but going down a legal road is just not a good thing. And there's several other expenditures that were not in here. We spent money on the police department, fire department. People want to come on vacation whether or not they're safe. They want to know, and they call and pick up the phone, somebody's going to be there to answer it. We certainly would not need the fire department we have or the police department we had if it was just another town like it is over here. So, those monies need to come out of tourism dollars. They're there specifically to fulfill the needs of the tourists and the increase in volume of people that are there. And so, I just want people to take away this, that we are actively engaged, paying attention, and really trying to get involved and make our beaches better and safer for all of our visitors. And I think that's it for tonight. I've pontificated enough.
Pontificated?
Had to pull one out for you.
Exceptional. Everybody paid attention to that, right?
Oh, I will say this. Mr. Wilson, since you've been up here a few times, I don't know about the rest of the board, but one of the things we talked about, well, I do know about the rest of the board, but one of the things we talked about was where do we cut off the passes? The intent is to slow down the number of vehicles out there so that it's safer and create the safe zones and other things we've done. If we give every single person in the county a pass, what have we done? There's almost 30,000 people in this county, 15 probably, which are drivers, then you throw two more passes on top of that, two cars per household or whatever the number is, and it becomes exponential very quickly. When we looked at the residents of Corova, it is a little bit different scenario as they live there. And there are five other public beach accesses in Corolla, one of which is now handicap accessible, and it's very nice. It has a bathhouse there, showers, the whole nine yards. So, we are not restricting your access to the beach. We have other areas for you to go to. I can appreciate you want to go to the full drive, and I hope you can appreciate that we want to cut down on traffic out there, and this is one way to do it. We will be taking a look at that at the end of the year and meeting with some residents. We'll probably establish a committee and talk about what worked and what didn't work and meet with staff. You know, they're going to have a new burden placed on them with this. What did they see? What were the complaints that they heard? And so, this is going to be a living thing, and we will adjust it as necessary. Okay, now I'm done.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Fair enough. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too attended the Crawford Fire Department fundraiser on Saturday, and it was a phenomenal event. I was blown away that they sold over 2,500 tickets, and that's significant. So, again, I applaud the fire department for the fundraiser, and it was a very well-done process. And too, our former fire inspector was sweating, providing enough food for everybody. Too, as Mr. Hall stated, there were tons of events going on this weekend, and it is spring, it is Currituck, and I am involved with lots of organizations that give back to the community. And one that I'm a part of and proud to be of is the Moyoc Women's Club. We had our annual tea on Saturday, and we raised close to $3,000 that we can give back to the community as far as just different community events, I mean, community needs, scholarships to students, and not necessarily just to women, because our scholarship this year is actually, well, I probably shouldn't say anything because it hasn't been awarded yet, so I'll just back up on that one. But another event that I attended was the Chamber Social, and the benefactors of that fundraiser was for the Senior Center and the Wild Horse Funds, which is just phenomenal, the attendance and how much, quite a few people I saw at many events, at each one of the events I attended on Saturday. I also attended an event yesterday afternoon in Corova in the off-road area at the fire department. And during that meeting, it was, a question and comment was posed to us about the reorganization of the Corolla Fire Department. And I just want to publicly state that we are working, and I speak on behalf, and I have Chief Melton here so he can correct me if need be, but we are trying to enhance and ensure that the services needed are met in each one of our districts. The positions that are being hired and the persons that are being placed in those positions, especially in this reorganization, are the qualified candidates. We're not picking and choosing. They are the qualified candidates that are being placed in that. We, as commissioners and as the county and as the leaders of our fire and EMS, are not trying to do something to take away from our volunteers and our paid emergency services personnel. So, I just want that to be known throughout the community, that we are not trying to take things away. We are not trying to cut paychecks. If you understand the logistics of human resources and the federal laws of how you pay employees, we are on board with that. And I asked Chief Melton here, and Chief Melton, if you would step up to the podium, please, and I'm not trying to put him on the spot, but I want him to kind of tout his, just talk about the academy that you have, and I think that the public needs to know some of the things that we are doing in our fire and EMS. And Chief Melton, you know, we are forever grateful, all of your services, but if you would just elaborate a little bit on the academy and if there's something that you've thought of that you want to share on the Corolla reorganization.
Okay. Today's a very exciting day for the fire EMS department. We had, it is the first day of our fire academy for our external hires, the 19 employees with the board support that we're hiring to get them prepared to man up the Corolla Fire District. The go-live date for that is May the 12th. At that time, they will join 20 existing employees that we have that are cross-trained, that have volunteered to work in the fire district for a complement of 39 firefighter paramedics or firefighter EMTs working in that district, spread amongst three shifts, including supervisors. So, that is, like I said, the go-live date is May the 12th for that. So, they're in a six-week, the external hires are in a six-week academy for orientation and training. They're already certified, but we're actually going to put them through their paces and make sure that they're, get them comfortable working as a team together, because they are going to be working with each other when we deploy them, and make sure that if they need any tune-ups or anything like that, our fire training officer and our EMS training officer that's with me tonight are going to be working very closely to make sure that they get the training and refresher that they need.
Thank you. And Chief Melton, any participants or candidates that are qualified are more than welcome to apply for these positions. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So, I would encourage anyone that has a certification or has the thirst of knowledge that wants to get into the academy to train, that we would certainly welcome and embrace that. So, thank you, Chief, for coming and just doing an overview of that. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Gilbert? Before the chief runs away?
Chief, come back, please.
One of the things I wanted to provide clarity on, just in case those that were not aware how we got to this point, and it was specifically at the request of Corolla due to the average age of a volunteer firefighter in Corolla.
64 years of age.
64 years of age. So, this was not a county-initiated action. This was at the request of the residents, and they knew that that was going to result in a tax increase in order to be able to help offset or be able to help pay for that. So, I think that's very admirable and look forward to it. Thanks, Chief.
Certainly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again. And again, I just wanted that to be out in the public so that the misunderstandings and misconceptions that are out there, that we are taking advantage of our employees is no longer a secret. It's out there. Chief Melton is available. Deputy Chief Riley is available, the county manager. We've got plenty of resources, so if you have questions and don't understand something, please ask that question. The last thing that I want to talk about is I'm involved with a lot of community events, and one particular nonprofit is Beloved Haven. And this, Beloved Haven is a nonprofit organization committed to fight against human trafficking throughout the community, well, through community awareness, fundraisers, and trainings. They advocate on behalf of the victims and survivors everywhere. And a lot of people are in disbelief that we have that in our community, but it is very highly visible, and there is an issue. So... So on Sunday, April 22nd, at the Pass the Salt Restaurant, from 5:30 to 7:30, they are having a spaghetti dinner fundraiser. And if you don't know what Pass the Salt is, if you've reached this building, it's right across the street from the courthouse, the historical courthouse here. So I would invite anyone and everyone, if you would like to participate or help with the Beloved Haven, the website is www.b-e-l-o-v-e-d-h-a-v-e-n.org. And I would certainly ask each of you to check that out, because it is something that is very visible and very apparent in our community. So please take that under, if you need more information, you can contact me or go to their website. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Commissioner Payment?
Well, first of all, let me say, since I've been on this board, this has been the longest commissioner report I have ever sat on. So mine is not going to be anywhere near the length of the rest of commissioners, but that's okay. I just wanted to let everyone know that Currituck County Schools has an advisory board. It's the CTE, which is the Career Technical Educational Advisory Board. It's relatively new, and I was appointed to be part of that, owning a business, technational business in this county and being a board of commissioners. We had the opportunity to tour the schools last week and look at all the programs that they're doing, offering for our students in there, all the way from drafting, the video pieces, welding. It was amazing to see what our school systems are, have for our students out there and the amount of enrollment that they have. And I know the state and federal government's looking at putting more money towards those programs to help them get their students on the career path opportunity to get out in the workforce right away, which, it's exciting. The advisory board is a group of all different type of businesses throughout the community, business leaders, and it was just wonderful to see that. So I'd let the community know that we're working toward the, helping the schools develop that program and to get that moving forward. And just lastly, just one touch base on occupancy tax. I mean, I know how important it is for our community. It's important to the Currituck Outer Banks, it's also important to the mainland. And I know as a commissioner, and I listen to other commissioners, we discuss numerous projects and we stay focused on the ones we've committed to. It is important throughout the whole county, and just want to let everybody know that, you know, without it, I've lived here a long time, and it's just amazing what things have been done so far. And we've got a vision, and I know we're working on other projects to get done for all of Currituck. And being on the fire department, I will tell you that in the summertime, when I respond to vehicle wrecks and different events on the highways, most of the people I'm helping and working is with, and I know the chief will attest that this is well up in Moyoc all throughout, it's mostly out-of-town tourist visitors that are in those vehicles, and I know they're appreciated, we're there to help them. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to add something, you just talked something on, one of the comments that was made was about completing the bike path, and because you said we're, you know, everything's a work in progress, kind of triggered that thought. We are working hard to finish the Karala Greenway. There are certain sections of that we cannot do. We don't own the dirt, and we're not getting an easement from the owner. And I mentioned at our last meeting, myself and Commissioner Hall went and talked to a representative from Pine Island to see about moving more of it through Pine Island. They've had their board meeting, and we're just waiting to hear back from them on their decision about whether we'll be moving forward. So that is extremely high on our list of things to get done. And we're also looking at the stretch between Karlite and Monterey, where the bridge landing is. Obviously, that is a crazy busy section, and so we're having discussions about that as well, and that'll come into play at budget time, I'm sure, this year. So just want to let you know, we're still working on it.
Thank you all for your comments this evening. Moving on to administrative reports, NC DOT Annual Report, District Engineer Jerry Jennings has been kind enough to come and give us a presentation. Welcome, Mr. Jennings. Nice to see you.
Well, good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to be here. We're trying to go around to each of the counties. Again, I'm Jerry Jennings, I'm Division Engineer for NC DOT for Division One. We represent the Northeast 14 Counties, and we're trying to go around to each of our counties, provide a general update of NC DOT activities within the area. A couple of things I want to do is I want to introduce current staff. We've had some changes, want you to know who to call for what, be able to put a name with face. Want to update you on current projects that are either ongoing or in the planning phases in Currituck County. Also, want to provide an update on some maintenance and operations plans that are affecting Currituck, and then be glad to answer any questions that you may have as it relates to transportation. First of all, Alan Moran is the Board of Transportation member representing Division One. He could not be here tonight, he had planned to be here, he had a personal matter come up and cannot attend, but I'm sure he will try to come back another night. But he represents this region on the State Board of Transportation. But with me tonight, I have a few folks I want to just mention, Wyn Bridgers and Ronnie Sawyer. Wyn is our Division Maintenance Engineer, Ronnie's our Assistant Division Maintenance Engineer. They're responsible for all highway maintenance activities within our 14-county region. So all the yellow equipment, all the personnel doing day-to-day maintenance activities within our area, they're responsible for. Glenn Cook, Glenn is the County Maintenance Engineer for Currituck County. So he, along with Reggie Saunders, who many of you know, are responsible for the activities that are ongoing within Currituck County. Also, we have Gretchen Byram. Gretchen is our Division Project Development Engineer. Over the last couple of years, there's been a decentralization effort of planning, project development, project design from Raleigh to the division. So we handle a lot of projects locally as opposed to Raleigh. It gives us a lot more control, and we feel we can manage them better at this level. She is leading those efforts for us at the division. And also Randy Midget. Randy is our District Engineer out of Elizabeth City. He covers six counties of District One. He's responsible for all of our contractor oversight, our project management, contract administration, as well as all of the permitting activities that the department does, such as driveway permits, right-of-way encroachments, subdivision reviews, road additions, things of that nature. So in terms of project updates, a few that I'll mention here. Wright Memorial Bridge, this project began last July. It's a $21 million preservation project. What I mean by preservation project, it's a, basically a rehabilitation project intended to extend the life of the bridge, to keep it in, keep it safe, keep it functional, and to extend the replacement life. It's a $21 million project, Flatiron Constructors is the contractor. The completion date is fall of 2019, but the bridge will reopen to traffic by May 14th of this year. Work will continue from underneath, from lane closures, that will continue. The type of work that's occurring is there's a deck overlay on the bridges, the Eastbound Bridge, as well as a lot of concrete repairs, power repairs, just general heavy maintenance of the bridge to keep it in a safe and functional condition. And I will say, we appreciate everyone's patience with that project. I know it has not been, not been pleasant, but it will end up with a much, much better product when it's complete. And a small bridge replacement project up in Moyoc, this is Bridgeover Single Land and Creek on Camelia Road. This project was just recently completed. It's an $822,000 project done by S.T. Wooton, was just completed last month. Upcoming project, this was a project we were able to fund through a new program that the General Assembly just created last year called High Col, I'm sorry, High-Impact Low-Cost Program, where it dedicates a small amount of funding to each division to deal with projects that are too large to address from, with our maintenance funds, but are really too small to pursue through our 10-year TIP capital project fund. So this is one we were able to fund through that process. It's one that I know Currituck has been concerned about in the past. We've had concerns from a maintenance perspective, but it's to stabilize the shoreline along the Knott's Island Causeway, particularly the area right along the bay there from the bridge going towards Knott's Island. It's about a $440,000 project, that's what's currently funded, and it will, is scheduled to let later this year.
Hug's over there.
Excuse me?
You might get hugged for doing that.
It's certainly needed, we recognize that. This one's a little further off. This is, project is R-5717, it's SR-1227 and 1208, but it's South Mills Road and Old Swamp Road. It's in Camden in Currituck County, basically cuts between 168 and 17. And really, it's a modernization-type project. It'll widen the pavement, will widen the shoulders, it'll rehabilitate the pavement, address some drainage concerns, will address some of the curves. So this is a $24 million project scheduled for right-of-way acquisition in 2019 and construction in 2021. So this is currently being managed from the division, and our consultant for this is Another one you may have asked about, you may have heard of this one before, Mid-Currituck. Project, the reevaluation report of the environmental impact statement is currently ongoing and nearing completion. So the final environmental impact statement was completed in 2012, but because of the timeframe that has elapsed between then and now, it had to be reevaluated. That is almost complete. That document is needed to complete the record of decision, which will follow this summer. I spoke with the, this is a toll project, obviously, it's being managed by the Turnpike Authority rather than either Division or DOT. I spoke with them to make sure I had current information. Couple of things that are ongoing, they just recently had an international coordination meeting with all the various agencies involved, trying to finalize this reevaluation report. That was just held a couple of weeks ago. They're working with Federal Highway Administration to complete that report. They're also continuing the traffic and revenue studies. The traffic and revenue studies will be used to develop the plan of finance. That plan of finance will be used to inform the project delivery method, the type of construction contract that would be utilized. So the process is moving forward. And talking with the Turnpike Authority, they indicated that they expected to be out sometime this summer, meeting with the county, meeting with the various stakeholders about the next steps. Other project, this is Shortcut Road, US-158 between Barco and Bellcross, two-lane road which will be widened to four-lane divided facility. It is currently being designed. Right-of-way acquisition is scheduled for 2023 with construction scheduled for '25. We're hoping maybe this one can be accelerated, but the estimated cost is about $120 million. And part of this is in Camden as well. Also mentioned, future I-87, while not directly connecting to Currituck, I know it's of interest to Currituck County. And this is a busy slide, but a couple of things that I'll mention. There's a draft feasibility study that is available online for the US-17 portion of future I-87 that extends from Williamston to the Virginia State Line. That study is almost complete. The only thing that's not in there are some of the final cost figures, but it is, the draft report is available online. The US-64 portion of that report from Williamston to Raleigh is completed and is available online as well. And I will add that that feasibility study does include an alternate alignment at Currituck's request that does tie to 168 as opposed to going up 17. So there's two alternates as you approach the state line, being evaluated in that report. There's one project in our current 10-year plan, in our TIP, and it happens to be the one that is at the state line down to Elizabeth City Bypass on US-17. Now, what it's doing is taking the existing four-lane divided facility and creating a freeway facility out of that. That project is currently programmed for right-of-way acquisition in 2025, construction in 2027. The planning on it is just beginning. A project like this will be subject to being, to be reevaluated under the next update of our STIP, as I'll mention in a minute, as will all the other sections of the future Okay, the STIP is our State Transportation Improvement Plan, and basically, it is the document that identifies all the funding and scheduling of all of our capital projects throughout the state. Projects are selected through a data-driven process, and locally for Currituck County, that is done in conjunction or in coordination with the Almar RPO, the Rural Planning Organization. I believe Commissioner Beaumont is Currituck's representative on that organization. So it's a 10-year program. Projects in the first five years are considered committed. They're locked in, they're moving forward. Projects in the out-five years are subject to being reprioritized in the next update. They may stay in, they may not be, those priorities are still subject to change. Document is updated every two years. Currently, the prioritization process is just beginning for the next update. And this document contains not only highways and bridges, but also aviation rail, transit ferry, bike path, the whole gamut of transportation options. And the document is available online. I know that's a difficult link, but you can go straight to our ncdot.gov and get to it as well. A couple of maintenance and operations programs I want to mention. The first is our Highway Maintenance Improvement Program. This is basically our five-year pavement maintenance plan. So we currently have a five-year plan that addresses all of our pavements in each county. It includes resurfacing, which everyone's familiar with, as well as pavement preservation. And what I mean by pavement preservation, that includes other type of surface treatments. Some are familiar with the old BST-type treatments. It could be crack sealing, it could be other type of treatments, but this is predominantly resurfacing. So just in Currituck County alone, in that five-year plan, there's almost $13 million in resurfacing, equating to 49 road miles, and 1.4 million in preservation, equating to 38 road miles. So it's a five-year plan, updated each year based on condition of the road. So just as an example, the roads in green are currently under contract to be completed by June of 2018, and we're getting, you know, aren't many left to be completed by June of 2018. But then the ones in blue are under contract to be completed by June of 2019. And later this year, we'll be working on the contract for the following year, so it's kind of an ongoing process. Also mention our Road Maintenance Improvement Program, which is similar to one I mentioned before, it's everything outside of our pavements. So this is a two-year plan, and it's an effort to try to focus more on planned maintenance activities and less on reactive maintenance. So the goal of this program is to focus 50% of our maintenance funding on planned maintenance activities such as drainage ditch maintenance, shoulder maintenance, pipe replacements, pavement markings, those sorts of activities, with about 50% going towards those other types of reactionary maintenance activities that you just have to do. So in Currituck County alone, for this year, that equates to about 1.2 million in planned maintenance activities, and that would equate to another 1.2 in, you know, set aside for other, as needed, activities. So lastly, you know, while we want to focus on planned activity, certainly we want to be responsive to concerns or complaints that arise. Provided contact information for a local maintenance yard here in Maple. Provided Glenn Cook's and Reggie Saunders' contact information. Also provided contact information for our website. There's a good online resource to be able to research information. And... to be able to research information and report problems. So at that, I'd be glad to answer your questions that you may have.
Just wanted to, I didn't hear you touch on it, the bridge, are you going to reopen that for the summer, is that the plan?
The Wright Memorial Bridge?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, by, in May.
Okay. And then, I thought I'd heard that you guys were going to do some resurfacing on Route 12, near, maybe up near the Cattle Great, south for about a mile, does that ring any bells for this year?
We'll, we'll follow up on that and, it's not ringing a bell right offhand, but we'll, we'll let you know what the schedule that is.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I know it's, it's in the plan, whether that has been let contract yet or not, I'm not 100% sure. It may already be under contract.
Okay.
Pushing it's coming up.
Thank you.
Mr. Jennings, is the Mid-Currituck Bridge in the five-year STIP?
Yes.
Thank you. And I know Mr. Beaumont's going to carry the torch for us to make sure that I-87 comes from Camden to Currituck County, and I appreciate that, Mr. Beaumont. If everyone's paying attention to that, that's a really important road for us to get, so. With all the relative folks here in the audience, it's coming at you.
Hey, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
We had a, a brief by Secretary Trogdon, or at least it was, who's Sec Transportation, and part of what he had addressed was the acceleration of, of road projects. The money's in the bank, right? Let's get it, let's get the road built, and can you briefly describe what, as I understood it, things would happen in series, right, before you could go to step two, step one had to be completed, and he's looking at more of a parallel approach where possible, where it doesn't, anyway, if you could just, for the purpose of those that have never heard about this, just if you'd be so kind.
Well, part of the, the changes that have been ongoing process-wise within the department over the last couple of years, the majority of all projects were managed in Raleigh up until a couple of years ago. So they were managed by someone who was not familiar with the area, not familiar with the issues, and there was a cookbook approach followed, you know, you did this, you did this, you did this, from a point away. So what's happened over the last couple of years is, is a real sea change in the way that we do business. One, all but the very largest projects have been moved to the Division level. We manage those out of our Division office using consultants as opposed to in-house staff. We're running as many different activities concurrently as we can, we have compressed schedules as much as possible. So the schedules that we have today are tremendously tighter than what they were just a few years ago, and that's all based on really the way we're using consultants and the way we've moved the, the control of those projects from Raleigh to much closer to where the, the rubber meets the road.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, I have a question. How do you go about deciding which ditches need maintenance? I know we have a lot of problems with storm management and the ditches around here. What's the process?
You know, that, that is something that, you know, our, our local, our local maintenance folks are familiar with the area, and, and they're, it's something I probably can't speak to, we, we lean on them to know their area better than anyone. And one of the challenges you run into is, you know, our responsibility is to maintain the ditches within our right-of-way, except the drainage that comes to us, make sure it's passed on downstream, but we're not responsible for every ditch that carries water, you know, away from the roadway till it reaches the river. So, you know, we try to maintain the roads within our right-of-way, maintain the pipes in our right-of-way, make sure everything is functioning to the extent possible, and certainly where there are concerns, you know, we, we hear them, and we want to hear them when we be made aware of where we have bottlenecks, where we have something that's undersized, where something needs to be cleaned out, and we make that an effort. As part of our, our maintenance plan that I mentioned is to become more proactive in that and clean out ditches before they become a problem, as opposed to just reacting to something when it gets to the point that it's flooding, we clean it out, try to become more, more, you know, preventive in that effort as opposed to waiting until it floods. So, I probably didn't answer your question, but certainly Reggie and Glenn can, can certainly help you with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can.
Yes.
Jerry, a phone call that we get a lot in our office, could you comment a little bit on, now that spring is here, your mowing schedule?
Yes. All, all mowing contracts this year, we've added one additional cycle. Am I correct, when we have six, six cycles now on, on all of our routes? I think last year, we had five on most routes, so we've added one additional mowing cycle. We have litter included on our major routes, our major primary routes, 168, 158, we have litter included in that, so have to pick up ahead of that, something we hadn't always had in those contracts. So it's, it's an effort to try to address litter in conjunction with the mowing contract. So contractor has certain windows to mow each cycle, basically, we tell them when they have to begin a cycle, and they have a timeframe, they've got to, got to complete that cycle of mowing. But the challenges you run into is, you know, weather. You know, it can be dry, it can rain, and when it rains, the grass grows more so, and you can't mow for a period of time, and so, you know, there's, there's, there's challenges there, but, so, six cycles a year is what we currently have slated.
I guess they've recently mowed, so we're really seeing it now, and it's, it's been, we've gotten emails about it, so is the litter portion of that kicked in yet, I guess, or is that in the next cycle when they come forward?
They, I don't know that, how about if I, how about if I send you, before I tell you something wrong, how about if I, how about if I send you exactly how the, how the litter and mowing are coordinated? But we have litter in the mowing contracts, exactly how, if it's every cycle, or exactly how it's coordinated, and I'm not positive about, but I'll let you know.
That would be great.
Yes.
Any chance you can mow down those campaign signs, I'm tired of looking at them.
We've got to wait a bit longer before we can do that.
The wind's taken care of a lot of that already.
Any further questions for Mr. Jennings? Mr. Jennings, thanks so much for that update.
Charlie, thank you all for having us.
Much appreciated. Moving on to Currituck County Cooperative Extension Report to the People, and with that I will call up Ms. Teresa Dozier. Ms. Dozier, I'm glad to see you got the red jacket memo today. Well played.
I'll have to wear a tie.
Teresa, if you could, just let, let these folks funnel out, thank you.
Each year around this time, we at Cooperative Extension in Currituck come to deliver our annual report to the people. As Extension works hard to meet the needs of our community in the areas of foods and nutrition, 4H and youth development, and agriculture, we thought we'd let a few of our clients tell you what Extension has meant to them. Currituck was selected as one of the pilot counties for the Extension Master Foods Volunteer Program. Dottie Milstead was one of the charter members in that program, which will be rolled out to the rest of the state of North Carolina in 2018. We asked Dottie what her involvement in family and consumer sciences programming has meant to her.
I'm involved in the Cooperative Extension Master Foods Volunteer Program here in Currituck. I recently moved here, and I really was looking for a way to meet new people, and this has been a great experience. The other thing I take home is the recipes and what I've learned, which is much healthier than recipes I have. Also, just the fact that I am involved with other people, and that's such a good feeling. I'm working with the 4H kids, I'm working with adults, we're meeting new people each time that we have classes. I have always been in 4H as a child, I grew up in Mecklenburg, I moved out here, and I really do love the area, I'm enjoying my time here, and I'm back in 4H and working with the Master Foods Volunteer Program. And that makes me really happy and getting to know all the agents here and in Camden as well.
The 4H program here in Currituck County provides opportunities for our young people to be involved in positive educational opportunities as well as leadership development. Gregory Dozier represented Currituck County and the state of North Carolina at the 2017 National 4H Congress. We asked Gregory what his experience in 4H has meant to him.
I'd probably say the most meaningful experience I had this year was going to National Congress. I was able to go to National Congress by participating in ARI, which is Application, Interview, Resume, Essay. It's, it's really similar to a job interview. I learned a lot of different stuff. I learned how to communicate better with other people. In one workshop, I even learned how to swing dance, and, and I'm at, like, when I walked into the workshop, I, I knew nothing about swing dancing, and within 30 minutes, they had me pulling people through my legs, it was crazy.
If somebody were going to ask you about the value of 4H, what would you tell them?
I would probably tell them you can't really put a value on, on 4H, because there's so much, there's so many different things you can do. There's presentations, there's the ARI program, there's, there's livestock, there's, there's just tons of stuff you can do, computers, robotics, it's, it's endless. If you want to make a new club, you can, so, in 4H, you can learn about whatever you want to, you can, you get to know people better, you get new experiences that you've never had before, and you just get to develop yourself as a person better than any other program that I've ever been a part of.
Management of the CCRC, or the Currituck County Rural Center, falls under the 4H Department in Cooperative Extension. As such, there's a large focus on family-friendly activities and educational programming specifically focused on equine education. We asked Danan Dawson, regular park visitor, what this facility has meant to her and to her family.
I am Danan Dawson, I live on Spot Road, and my boys and I come here often to use the park facilities. We ride here, we ride bikes here, we fish here. The park is always very clean, and the staff is friendly, and they feel, I feel like they're always here to help you if you have questions.
Cooperative Extension throughout the nation is probably best known for its support of farmers and the agricultural community. We asked longtime clients of Extension, Powell Farms, what the services that Cooperative Extension provides have meant to them and their business.
Our involvement with Cooperative Extension in Currituck is that we are farmers, and they are our go-to people when we need to do soil samples, when we don't know what we need to spray, being able to just call them or get them to come look at our crops and help us out with a weed or something, or a bug. I think that they give us sources of information that we couldn't get anywhere else, or we would have to go at great lengths to find it, and, and farmers, when they're in a pinch, or if they're, the weather is, is cramping down on us to get something done, we can go to them and get it done quickly, to find out what we need and how to do it. So, value-wise, I don't think that farmers would do very well without their Extension agents and the services that they offer. It's very convenient, and they do a great job keeping us informed on everything that we need to know as farmers, so we'd like to say that we thank them and we appreciate them very much.
We at Extension truly care about our clients and our community, and we thank you, our county government and our taxpayers, for allowing us to do the job that we love, right here in Currituck County.
So, I don't think I need to say a whole lot else, except I want to reiterate just how proud I am of the work that our staff does. Sitting here in the audience tonight, I'll just introduce them to you real quick. Olivia Jones is our Family and Consumer Science Extension Agent. She does a fantastic job with foods and nutrition programming. Sherry Lynn is our Administrative Coordinator, she does a great job keeping us all in line. She's our glue. Sherry Fischel-Schweiger is our 4H agent, and you heard some of the reports of what she does. Tom Harrell is our CCRC Director and a 4H Program Assistant. This year, he's taken folks that have participated, or young people that have participated in various horse educational contests all over the state of North Carolina, and done a fantastic job. Stephanie Minton is our other 4H Program Assistant here tonight. She works with the camping program, the electric project, takes clover buds, our little ones, gets them started in the 4H program. Sheila Gregory came in on two wheels straight from Raleigh this evening, she is actually President of her State Association, so she's leading her activities among 4H, or, I'm sorry, Family and Consumer Science and other program assistants across the state of North Carolina. John Fitchett back there is our CCRC Park Manager, he does an outstanding job keeping that place in tip-top shape. Beside him is the newest member of our staff, Mr. Mark O'Brien, who's also a park attendant now at the CCRC, and we're very happy to have him on board. Not with us tonight is, is our new Agriculture Agent, Jody Carpenter, we've sent him up to Raleigh to get all his training for the state stuff that he needs to do. But I am just extremely proud of the work that these folks do. We've got national winners sitting here with us, we have folks that are building tomorrow's leaders, making them national winners. We've got great partnerships in the community, our facilities are beautiful and well-kept, and I'm just, just so incredibly proud of the work that, that they do. I do want to make you aware that this weekend, if you haven't seen it, you know, if you, if you're a subscriber, if you're a MediaCom person, or if you sat here before the meeting, you saw all our program announcements cycling through up there, but this weekend is our Home Flower and Garden Show from 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday at the Extension Building, so we want to invite you all out and tell you not to miss that, we're excited about that. And with that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or call one of these folks up to answer.
I've got a question for you.
I'll answer.
So, they mentioned soil testing, is that something that would extend to somebody, just a home gardener?
Absolutely, yes. Most times during the year, getting your soil tested is free, there are, there is a period of peak season where there's a fee associated, but we have soil test boxes, kits, all the tools and supplies that you need, and we'll get them packaged and shipped off for you and help you analyze the report when it comes back.
Perfect, because I have some vet cucumber requests here, so.
Come on down.
And the CCRC, you mentioned that, I think we heard that you guys are just about full for events this year, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Just about full for events this year?
We still have some date slots available. Our prime season is the spring and the fall, obviously. With equine events, you, you don't really want to put your horses in a tin can and sit them on Highway 158 for too long. So, when it's cooler, we get a little bit more activity, but yeah, we have several events that have down there, the RV spots have already been used, we're very excited about that. And we've got, the, the camps that we have planned down there are already full. So, all the slots that we had set aside for folks to participate in those educational activities have been sold out. In fact, the last check was written today. So, they're capped out, but we'll put you on a waiting list if you still want to get involved in one of those, and hopefully we can make accommodations.
That's great, thank you.
All right.
Karen, I would just like for your staff to stand again, and, and we give them a round of applause, because they're very much appreciated, and, and you guys just excel in what you do. So if you would kindly stand so that we can congratulate you and thank you.
Outstanding. I just have a couple of comments. Number one, thank you for dinner.
You're welcome.
Next time, we need to schedule like a 15-minute nap afterwards.
And I kind of wish I'd eaten it with you now.
Much appreciated. Also, if I can, a, a comment from Ms. Dozier, it's, it's been a pleasure over the last couple of years watching your son grow through the 4H program. We, we get the privilege to go into the award ceremonies, Gregory's just turned into quite the fine young man, and I know 4H had a lot to do with that. So it's much appreciated, and people.
You're welcome. Bobby, did you know, he's in the band, right?
All of the, all of the, all the programs that y'all provide is staggering, the, the numbers for volunteerism, again, I know I say it all the time, but nothing like it in Currituck.
I agree.
There's, you can't beat Currituck anywhere, and thank you so much for all you folks do.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I'll actually, if you guys don't have any additional questions, I can introduce your next.
That'll be great, thank you.
Speakers, if you like. All right. So with us tonight are Ed Emery and Stan Dixon, who were instrumental in putting together this version of the Currituck County Agricultural Development Plan, and that was funded by NCDAs and the Farmland Preservation Trust Fund, and they worked through the Lois Brit Agribusiness Center at the University of Mount Olive to complete that plan. And you've each been given a, a hard copy of the plan at your seat, so I believe Ed is going to present for you. I called him Ed, because he was a 4H agent when I was growing up in the program, and County Extension Director, and now he's old and retired.
That's right. Thank you, Cameron. Before I start with my University of Mount Olive hat, I do want to tell you how pleased I was to be here for your report to the people from Cooperative Extension. As Cameron said, I've known her since she was five years old, and I've had a chance to watch her grow in 4H and to become the leader here in, in Currituck County that she is. And I know you probably know this, but I want you to know that Currituck County is always seen as a stellar Cooperative Extension program, and it continues to grow and develop and serve the people here. So, across North Carolina, this program's always held in number-one status, so I want you to know that. Now, back to my University of Mount Olive hat. Dr. Stan Dixon and I had the privilege, over the past couple of years, to work here in Currituck County to develop the Currituck Agricultural Development Plan. And we are here to present that to you tonight. This funding, as Cameron said, was from the North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Program Trust Fund, which is managed by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. That group, in turn, has contracted with the University of Mount Olive, where we work, to write plans for several counties here in the northeastern part of the state. The goal of this trust fund, which was established in 2005, is to support farming, forestry, and horticulture in the state of North Carolina, to protect agricultural farmlands, and to make agriculture a viable industry in our state in all counties. As of 2016, 55 counties have completed this planning process. This year, five more counties are coming online. Three, Proquemans, Pasquetank, and Chawan, have already come onboard. And tonight, we are presenting your plan. And later next month, the Wilson County Plan will be brought online. Wanted to tell you a little bit about the benefits of this agricultural plan, what it is and what it isn't. It establishes a local vision for agricultural preservation, agricultural development, and the development of agricultural enterprises at the county level. It identifies needs of agriculture and forestry. It's a snapshot for you of the state of agriculture in Currituck County today. It does not impose any land restrictions. This has nothing to do with restricting what one can do with their property. And that's very important for us to remember. But it also, once this plan is accepted by the county and certified by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, it gives priority funding from agencies awarding agricultural grants and reduced matching requirements to your agricultural entities in the county, as well as farmers and landowners. So, once this is in place, your folks will qualify for that. As you flip through the plan, and I know many of you are seeing it for the first time tonight, you'll see that it's divided into five sections. You'll see an overview of the county, in which we talk about a brief history, your economy, transportation, infrastructure, education, natural attributes, and soils. Then, we move to the state of agriculture. And we look at the economic impact of agriculture and how it affects our local economy and the quality of life for all county residents. The most recent economic impact of agriculture in Currituck County accounts for 8.4% of the county's value-added total income. The agricultural sector also accounts for 7.6% of the county's total employment. Currituck County has the resources, human and natural, to ensure that agriculture can prosper in the future. Just taking a look, a snapshot, as I said, of agriculture here. Agriculture and agribusiness contributed $49,522,814 in total income to this county. This county is ranked 22nd in corn production in the state of North Carolina, as well as 29th in the state in soybean production, 26th in the state in wheat production. In total cash receipts of agriculture and agricultural products, Currituck County ranked 85th in the state. We know that Currituck County is growing. We also know it's important to protect our farmland, to make it viable for our future. You will also see the section of this plan that talks about farm and forest protection programs. These are tools that the state of North Carolina has put in place to support agriculture and to protect our farmland. These, again, are merely suggestions of things that are available to you if you choose to use them. Through this planning process, we, at the University of Mount Olive, surveyed and interviewed farmers in your county, agribusiness owners, and non-farm residents. All of the interviews and surveys are anonymous per our university research guidelines. We have summarized those for you in the plan. And you can see that as part with all the graphs and charts. But as we interviewed folks, we found that of the farmers surveyed, 45% lack sufficient land to expand or diversify their operations. They also reported facing critical issues, such as low commodity prices, rising production input costs, and pressures from development. Farmers are also confronted by other challenges to their operation, such as the aging farmer population, with the average age of farmers in Currituck County being 56.6 years old. And 36% of our farmers that we surveyed have no farm transition plans, in other words, to transition their farm from their present generation to future generations. These issues present opportunities to enhance agriculture through education and support of citizens and local government. Of the non-farm citizens surveyed, 100% believe that local government should take action to preserve farmland as a valuable resource. 80% of those non-farm citizens believe that farming enhances the scenic beauty and open spaces of our county, while providing a positive impact on the environment. All of the non-farm residents surveyed support farm and forest preservation efforts in the county. The last and most important part of this plan is a set of recommendations that is, again, a suggestion for you to use and the agricultural organizations that support the farming community in our county to use as a means of directing our work, so that we can have the most impact. Again, they're suggestions, and I'd like to go over those briefly with you. Each of these recommendations has a recommendation, and then a set of suggestion actions, and also suggested timeline, and a suggestion of who you may want to involve in discussion regarding these recommendations. Support measures to protect and promote forest and farmland in Currituck County. The second, develop, adopt, and implement voluntary agricultural district and enhanced voluntary agricultural district programs. Develop and conduct programs to assist Currituck County farm and forest landowners with farm transition planning. Promote appreciation and awareness of the benefits of agriculture to Currituck elected officials and our citizens. Expand and support youth agricultural educational programs. And then finally, develop technical, business, and marketing training for the maintenance and expansion of agriculture in Currituck County. This is training that we would provide to our agricultural sector on things that they have identified in this plan. Again, the intent of this plan is neither to limit nor restrict landowners' rights and uses. The plan is merely a guideline for actions to provide farmers, landowners, and citizens an increased awareness of farmland preservation opportunities. We all know and agree that agriculture is important to Currituck County and its economy, and to the well-being of our family farms. However, the final decision on that farmland preservation rests in the hands of the owners of those farms and their forest. So, with this, we present this plan to you. Once this plan has been accepted and received by you, then it will be certified by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. Mr. Scanlon, thank you so much for helping us with this. And Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This study was started back, what, a few years ago? I remember, I think it was Harvey Roberts and Manley West had come before. Is this the same thing about preserving? She's shaking her head no.
That is not the same thing. This came back a little bit later than that. But that was something that was locally driven here.
Okay. Because I know with that plan, if you were like a historical farm, you could never develop it or something like that. So, this is entirely different.
Yes. This is a guideline that you can have discussions around that kind of thing. But there's no prescription for that in this plan.
Thank you.
If I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Is any of this information something that's useful when we're working on our land use plan? Does any of this come into play with that?
Merely as far as the information that we receive from the surveys, if you can see trends and that kind of thing, that data may be helpful to you for that.
Thank you. Any further questions?
She's page 90, where it talks about farms and forests, enhanced scenic beauty and open space. But it talks about tax breaks for the farmers. What about for the guys that have trees that aren't going to cut them down? Do they have the same opportunity? I guess I would call them tree farmers?
Yes.
So, they can apply as well?
Yes. Present use, right.
Well, with no further questions, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working here.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Currituck ABC Board update and student education and awareness initiative. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Payment.
Thank you. I just wanted to get the Board of Commissioners an update with the ABC Board and currently what they're doing. And just to kind of give the citizens an update, what we're doing. And I asked our general manager, Michelle Lancaster, if she would come out tonight as well to talk about a program that's going to be done in conjunction with the school system on April 25th. But just to kind, to give the board a quick, just a quick update. The ABC Board, when the sale of alcoholic beverages at the end of the year, one of the requirements, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but one of the requirements is we have to distribute a certain portion of that to law enforcement in the county, which, the number for the end of December, the law enforcement received $16,227.36. And then, we have to give a portion of it to the school systems. And Currituck County Schools received funds in the amount of $22,718.30. And then, Currituck County gets a little bit of that as well, that they get to put to the bottom line and use for the county purposes. And that amount last December was $377,939.67, which a lot of citizens probably aren't aware that we contribute to the county, the schools, and law enforcement. And every year, that percentage just seems to have gone up. So, I guess people are drinking a little more, so.
Do you think that has anything to do with Sunday beverages?
Yeah. But the funds with the law enforcement and schools, those funds have to be used for educational purposes. Is that correct? So, the money is given to them to help them advocate different, whether it's pamphlets, meetings, whatever they need to, to educate the students and the public out there of alcohol awareness. And what I'd ask Michelle to come up here and help present tonight, I gave everyone a booklet that should have it. It's called Save a Life Tour. I'm going to let her talk, but it's a program that's a nationwide program. It's hard to get on the list for them to come in. But we've worked with the school system to get this program to come into our community and present this to the students at a school level. You might see some flyers around town. Michelle's been trying to get these up all over the county here. And I also gave the board a little bit of a brief description of the process that takes place for this to take place. And with that, I'm going to have Michelle talk a little bit how we came about this, how the board worked with the school system, what we did to get them in here, and a little bit about the program. And then, if there's a couple of questions she can answer, she'd be glad to do that. And so, with that, I think we've got a little video we want to play for the board, and maybe some other documents. So, thank you, Michelle, for coming tonight.
Thank y'all for having me here tonight. I just wanted to, like he said, we're having this program on April 25th. It does follow the Wednesday before prom, so that's a really good time to make an impact. It is an all-day school event from 8:05 to 3:10 in the afternoon. And Currituck County, with the high school, have chosen to do something about the problems that kill or injure thousands each year, distracted driving and impaired driving. The Save a Life Tour is a six-hour high-impact anti-texting, distracted driving, and anti-impaired driving program. It is a, the Save a Life is a high-impact safe-driving awareness program, beginning with a thought-provoking video. The program jumps into a live presentation full of personal stories, including the loss of loved ones. The event then brings crowd participation to the driver's seat of impaired and distracting driving simulators. They're one of a kind. We've been trying, you know, we have handed the monies over, but we've never actually had a say in where it was going. This program, we've been looking at for quite some time. So, we're very excited about this coming. The binder that I provided in front of you, as he spoke, they have Section C. It has the program synopsis and the outline of what will take place that day. And that will give you an idea of what, like I said, what will take place. And in addition, we do have a video with feedback from high school students and the impact that it made on them. And with that, they said that was the cue.
Yeah. The cue for Deborah to start the video real quick. Okay. Okay. All right.
We heard phrases. 11th and 12th graders at Heritage High got to experience what it's like to do both and why it's not such a good idea. WDBJ 7's Tanisha Watkins has more.
As 16, 17, and 18-year-olds behind the wheel, you think you're invincible. Today, juniors and seniors at Heritage High School got a lesson that may...
While she's working on that, it's just going to show you that the students are using the simulation device, experiencing what it's like to get behind the wheel, being drunk-driving and texting, to understand how you lose control. And again, this is going to be an all-day project in our school system. I believe they come early in the morning. And they start off with like a 45-minute introduction to the schools. And then, they'll break it up during the day for different-sized students, like 20 to 200 students per activity to come in.
Don't drink and drive, and don't text and drive. Two commonly heard phrases. 11th and 12th graders at Heritage High got to experience what it's like to do both and why it's not such a good idea. WDBJ 7's Tanisha Watkins has more.
As 16, 17, and 18-year-olds behind the wheel, you think you're invincible. Today, juniors and seniors at Heritage High School got a lesson that may help save a life.
We all remember what it's like driving a car for the first time, getting a taste of freedom, and not really thinking about the consequences. Today's students at Heritage High School learned just how dangerous it can be.
It was interesting. It really is a learning experience.
Sierra Haberly was up first to use the drunk-driving simulator. She's had her permit for nine months.
I was impaired, and I over-exaggerated with the turning, so it was harder to control.
The simulation only lasted three minutes, but it provided a valuable lesson.
I will not be drinking. I will not be texting. I will keep my phone maybe in the backseat, like one of my friend does.
The presentation was put on by an entertainment company that travels across the country, educating students about the dangers of impaired and distracted driving.
Safe driving is a privilege, and it's something that we can all do and take advantage of early. You can kill people at any age in a car.
YOVOSO, or Youth of Virginia Speak Out, is an organization at Heritage High School that also teaches about why it's important to stay focused on the roads.
So, we try to teach them, like, you shouldn't do drinking or texting, so you can save not only your life, but other people's lives.
And with prom season right around the corner, HHS's principal wanted to remind students to drive safe and drive sober. In Lynchburg, Tanisha Watkins, WDBJ 7.
And I also would like to add, we're reaching out to the local media as far as Daily Advance, Virginia Pilot, and Beach 104. And with that, that's it.
And we just wanted to let the citizens know that the ABC Board is involved with some of the funds to help educate our young kids and work with programs. And I believe the ABC Board can... I believe the ABC Board can describe what type of activities that they want this, these funds to be used for. Is that correct?
Yes.
If we so choose to, we can say we want, you know, we want to do a program like this, or a certain kind of pamphlets, or whatever we want to do. We just thought this was something great. Michelle did a great job trying to get these people to come in on a short notice. I think they're pretty booked up throughout the year. It's pretty hard to get these folks in.
Right before prom season, they're extremely busy.
Yeah, so we were lucky to get them in here. And like I said, this could be the high school. It's going to involve everybody. You see the simulator. It's going to be a big event. I think it's going to be worthwhile to get, make sure we educate our young children and about the dangers out there. And, and there's, that's what I handed you out there as well, the setup. You can see how big it is, the event that they do at the high school. So again, just wanted to thank the ABC Board for, you know, working with this and Michelle for everything she does. She works hard. We're getting, reaching out for these programs and making sure we support the community and efforts out there with, with these funds. So, I mean, and I guess if you've got any specific questions about the board, I'll ask Michelle if she could take a few questions as well.
Any questions? Ms. Lancaster, thank you so much for your coming up today.
Thank you so much for having me.
Mr. Payman, thank you for that presentation. If I can, I know it's getting kind of late, folks, if we can take a 10-minute recess, reconvene at 8:05. Okay, it's 8:05. We are back in session. Thank you for taking that minute, few-minute break. Moving on to public hearing in action, PB 18-07, Corolla Wild Horse Fund requests for a use permit for an outdoor tour operation on .04 acre located at 520B Old Stony Road, Ocean Club Center, Currituck Club, Tax Map 127F, Parcel One, Poplar Beach, Poplar Branch Beach Township. Any folks that are going to speak to this, if you could please come forward to be sworn in? If you could put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand.
Sorry.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got?
I do.
Thank you. And with that, I think Mr. White has something to say before we get started.
I do. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to ask the board, to allow me to recuse myself. I've had a lot of conversations before the Corolla Wild Horse Fund submitted their plan with their board members. They have also asked me if I'm interested in serving on their board. And they haven't made that decision yet. They're actually, I believe, having a retreat right now. Is that right?
We're in the middle.
Okay. And so additionally, they are a competitor, and then they take people out to see the wild horses, the same business I'm engaged in. So for those reasons, I'd like to ask to be recused, if I may.
Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make that motion for him.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hearing non-motion passes unanimously.
I'm out of here.
Don't leave the premises.
And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, you have before you a use permit, which is why we had, had to be sworn in, for the Corolla Wild Horse Fund. The reason for the use permit is they need to have a use permit issued in order to have a license, and they are looking to change locations. They are looking to move from 1129 Corolla Village Road to the Old Stony-
That's correct.
Yeah, 520 Old Stony, Old Stony Way, in condo unit B of the Ocean Club Shopping Center, which is, if you see, it's very busy, but this is the, the condo unit that they'll be in, and right here, this highlighted blue one. The applicant is the Corolla Wild Horse Fund, and they are asking to be able to relocate to, or for their use permit to move with them to their new location. And this existing use, the shopping center, like I said, the Ocean Club Boulevard, the total shopping center is just over eight acres. The lot area is 1.3 acres, but then the square, the condo unit is condo unit B, which is .04 acres in there. This is a zoning of single-family outer banks with the PUD overlay and the GB allocation, so the zoning is correct. This is fine for them. There, because of this, this use permit is required to have a license to operate a tour. The Corolla Wild Horse Fund does have a use permit history associated with, with their organization. In December of 2012, they were issued a use permit at 1129 Corolla, Corolla Village Road. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. It was, in February 2010, at 1126 Schoolhouse Lane, they were issued a use permit. And for one vehicle seating one to five people. In December of 2012, they've moved to 1129 Corolla Village Road, and they had a new use permit assigned to that location with one vehicle seating between one and five, one to five people. In May of 2016, they came back to the board and asked for amended use permit staying at 1129 Corolla Village Road, but then they asked for two vehicles, one seating one to five people, and one to seating 10 to 15 people, with the maximum number of patrons at 20. So they are located in the full-service area of the Corolla subarea from our 2006 land use plan. And they, let's see, they do have ample parking as one of the issues that has come before, that has often been associated with the use permit for them is parking. And there is ample parking. They are already operating the office, their office, and the museum there. There's ample parking for that. And then the five spaces that would need to be for the tour operation part, there's ample parking there at the, at the shopping center for that. So the technical review committee did review this, and they do recommend adoption of this use permit with the following conditions listed out in the staff report, that an outdoor tour operator license is required per Chapter 8, Article 4 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances. Outdoor tour operations shall comply with all standards of Chapter 8, Article 4 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances. A maximum of two vehicles may be operated for outdoor tours at any given time. Tour, total tour capacity shall not exceed 20 patrons at any given time. Tour vehicles shall be labeled with decals or paint markings that clearly display the company name in accordance with the license requirement of Chapter 8, Article 4 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances. So once again, the Corolla Wild Horse Fund has moved the locations, and to be able to make their, keep their license for conducting tours, they have to have, be issued a use permit. You have to have a use permit issued for the property in order to be able to apply for the license to conduct the tours. So that's why they are coming for you, asking for a use permit for this property. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. I've placed at your seat the three different use permits that the Corolla Wild Horse Fund has been issued over the last, I guess since 2010. So over the last eight years, the three different use permits that the fund has been issued.
Ms. LaCicero, has, in the use permits that previously they, they've had, have there been any violations or citations for their, for their permit?
No, there haven't been any to, that have, that I'm aware of. When I spoke with staff, they're good operators of a tour. No, so they, no major issues with them.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? If I could have the applicant speak, if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Jo Langone. I'm the chief operating officer of the fund.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything for this permit?
I, I also thank you for this review process, but I am hoping this is provided. We, we're going, we have left our, our old facility, have now moved, it's been since the end of January, and went through our whole process, coming to April 16th and looking forward to this date. We know that it doesn't interfere with anyone there. We have been sort of welcome with open arms with our neighbors and all, because it does have restaurants there, couple of shops. We also feel like we're going to add to the energy of that complex. It is sort of behind the visitor's center, so it's quite nice, actually, especially since we'll have a museum there. So I know I should be regarding whether we're interfering in anything or in the safety, and certainly not, certainly not. We're very well used to having this permit and what to do with it, and we're quite adept at doing it. I'll answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
I know that you have one of the great opportunities where it's more educational than possibly tourism, although they go hand in hand. I mean, do you see anything changing in that?
Actually, with each month of operation, as we were going along, we saw more and more of the need for education. We have done that from the beginning, but we've refined and keep refining, and our, our guides are really being instructed to give the salient points about the horses and, and their history and the heritage. And, and the other thing that goes hand in hand, besides the education of what we provide in our, we call them trips, not even tours, is data collection. Because we are mandated through the management agreement, the more data we have on this herd, the better we'll be. So we actually authorize our guides to also be observant, to take notes, not while they're driving, but to report back the data of what they see. So they're utilized in that way as well, which we're finding to be very important. And being without having this for the last three months, we're losing that time of data.
If I could, a couple, a couple of questions for clarity. Can you tell me what your, your program's going to look like? Are you doing regular tours? Are you doing tours for special donors? How's, I've just heard different talks about how it's going to look and how you're going to proceed from here, and just if you can elaborate on that a little bit.
It's, it's hard for me to give you an absolute right now. I will tell you that it is being looked at entirely differently. Number one, we're eight miles, miles south of where we used to be. So just on practical note, we know we have to address it differently.
Okay.
That's one thing. But more importantly, for the, for the mission of the fund, to, and for the education and the data collection, what's most important is putting it all together. So we're not hauling up people just to see horses in and out, in and out, in and out. That's not what we want to do or continue to do. Not that we ever did it that much, but I am, I mean, I'm hesitant to commit to-
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I was just curious.
Because our board and staff, well, right now, we're in the middle of a board-staff retreat. And this in particular is one of the issues that is being addressed to become part of this long-term planning session. So today, in fact, we had meetings all day long on, on this one topic. And we have, I can assure you, we have a lot of good ideas of what we want to do, and it's not going to be in any way like traditional commercial tour operators. I mean, it's, it's, it's probably going to be smaller, more focused, and again, stressing the education and the data collection.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of concerns. And I'd actually, and I'll start off with the first one. The first one is, you do get funds from the county, and on face value, and I understand what the county gets as part of that, as part of the funds that are spent, but on face value, there seems to be, I struggle with funding an organization or sending money to an organization that is in competition with commercial operations that are running in, in the county. So that's my issue number one. And I think something that the county would need to do would be to evaluate how much funds we're sending to the Wild Horse Fund, because if in fact, this starts leaning towards a commercial operation, as it has been in the past, is that right, that the county helps subsidize competition for other organizations within the county? So that's issue number one. Issue number two, I had heard from, and this is going back at least a year, if not a year and a half to two years ago, where, you know, the Wild Horse Fund was above the fray, if you will. They were the experts. They were the ones that you could count on to be unjundiced, and whatever opinion that they were presenting, you know, they had the horse's best-interest-at-heart type mentality. And how do you maintain that degree of distance when in fact, you're in competition with, you know, other tour operators going on? Because it's in conflict. I mean, at least on the outside, it, to me, is in conflict.
Okay. The money from the county, when we requisition for monthly now, for money from the county, it's a set amount. But we try to give, and we do, give a direct accounting of where that money is supposed to be coming in to pay off. And now it's already past expenses, but we do, I mean, I've changed that in, in terms of how we requisition, in terms of accounting for, and it's directly tied into that Wild Horse Management Agreement.
What, I know-
The specifics of what we are mandated to do-
Right.
-and carry forth.
I know the one piece missing from this discussion was, six months ago, 10 months ago, the, the, was it the manager, executive director of the Wild Horse Fund was invited to come to speak to the board about the Wild Horse Fund and operations. And the extent of our brief at the time was, do you have any questions for me? And so we all were left with, that's not the normal brief for accustomed to hearing. And I don't, I don't know that we've received the brief as far as where the county's expenditures or where the county's funding is going. Have, did I miss it?
No, sir. I just would, would comment that the, the then-director that came and presented in front of you is no longer with the fund. But agreed.
I mean, at the time was, we need, I remember the feedback, I think, from the board was, we'd like to know what's going on and, you know, with a more formal presentation to us, not just-
We can certainly schedule a, a more comprehensive report from the nonprofit, but as Ms. Langone was commenting, the, I can provide you the, a budgetary breakdown of the funds. We used to fund more towards the operation of the nonprofit, but we, we have stopped doing that over the last couple of years. And I can provide you the budgetary breakdown. They, they will provide us, in fact, when we, we have our, our work sessions, you'll, you'll see this. They- They will provide us, in fact, when we have our work sessions, you'll see this, they submit a budget specifically tied to action items in the management agreement that they are charged to undertake, and they have put a dollar cost to it and are requesting funds only for that activity, not activity, other activities associated with the operation of the fund itself. And I think what we just heard is now there's a procedure in place where they only draw out that budgetary funds as it is expended month to month, and that accounting certainly can be provided to you. We can schedule for a future meeting for them to come back and give a more comprehensive of-
Certainly.
-all the different things that the fund does, in addition to and well beyond what just the agreement requires.
That makes sense to me, yeah. So, none of the funds that you're getting from the tours go to anything but the tours?
Does it go to the fund? It goes to the fund, that's-
But I guess I mean the county funds.
But the county funds do not go towards-
Any tour operation.
It just doesn't work that way.
Okay.
We have a lot of expenses, so, and we can, and those associated directly with the agreement, the management agreement, is what we account for to the county, because it only makes sense that it should work that way.
I guess my question from an accounting perspective is that depending on how those funds are allocated, right, administrative expenses can be a very, there can be overlap between actual tour operations and managing of the herd type thing. I mean, or it pays a bill that, you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely, absolutely.
There are columns, and there are columns, and-
And we can schedule for a future meeting, a more comprehensive discussion with the fund, or the fund can come in front of you-
Yes.
... and all the various different activities that they conduct, and how financially they manage those and how it relates to the county fund, and we certainly can schedule that.
And I know, and this is why I wish we'd had that brief prior to tonight, isn't part of that, I know we had nor'easters, I know we had bad weather, right, but I think we're all well aware of fencing issues, and I know that's a responsibility, I believe, in the management plan, and, or some aspect of that, right, maintaining the fence line.
Some aspect of it, yes.
I know, like in the ocean, that's a more significant challenge.
The county holds the permit, so the county is ultimately responsible. In the day-to-day maintenance of the enclosure, the fund has been handling that, but the damage done of these series nor'easters is certainly beyond their financial ability to address. In fact, we met last week to assess the scope of that work that needs to be done, and that would be something I'll bring into the board, because it's certainly beyond their financial ability to handle the degree of repair replacement that has to be made. But the day-in, day-out oversight, management, basic repairs is something that the fund has been undertaking.
Okay, and then, can that aspect also be included in the brief, like the challenges they had with the horse fences?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or discussion? With that, I'll open the public hearing. I currently do not have anyone signed up for the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this issue? With that, I'll close the public hearing, and I will open the floor for a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
For Ike. We have before us a special use permit request, and doesn't the applicant have to provide evidence of the four elements that we have to find on and prove to us, or at least show to us?
The initial burden is on the applicant to present evidence and testimony to the four questions that's required by statutes for the use permit. So, between the actual application that's in your agenda package and the comments that you've heard tonight, they either have or have not met the burden for each one of those And that's a decision for the board to make, whether they've met those burdens.
An application is not a sworn statement, yet testimony provided is under oath.
But I do believe you can take in consideration the information as part, that's been included and submitted as part of the application.
And I guess Ms. LaSis, they've had special use permits in the past with no issues that have ever been-
Correct.
No concerns, okay.
Yeah, they have, they've had two, and then an amended one to add another vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve PB-18-07 Corolla Wild Horse Fund Use Permit with the recommendations of an outdoor tour operating license as required per Chapter Eight, Article Four of the Currituck Code of Ordinances. The outdoor tour operation shall comply with all standards in Chapter Eight, Article Four of the Currituck Code of Ordinances. A maximum of two vehicles may be operated for outdoor tours at any given time. Total tour capacity shall not exceed 20 patrons at any given time. Tour vehicles shall be labeled in decals or painted markings that clearly display the company name in accordance with the license requirements of Chapter Eight, Article Four of Currituck County Code and Ordinances. The use will not endanger the public health or safety because the parcels located in the established commercial area that includes retail shops, restaurants, and offices, and has adequate onsite parking. This will not enter the value of the adjoining or budding lands, which will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, because the proposed use is in harmony with Ocean Club Center occupants. The use is in conformity with the following policies of our 2006 Land Use Plans, Policy ED-1, Policy OB-2, Policy HB-3, and the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. The proposed use will not have any impact on schools. Currituck County has adequate public facilities to serve this use in the existing Ocean Club Center shops.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I'm just going to bring up one point of order.
Okay.
The applicant doesn't have any information to support everything that just was said. That's as-
Ken.
Well, we've got a motion.
I mean, the, and I understand, but literally, the application repeats the question of, and it's, I get it, they've done it before, right, but as an order, as a matter of process, as a matter of order, the applicant is, I mean, I'll give you an example. The use will not endanger the public or safety. The answer to that, or the justification is, the use will not endanger the public health or safety, and the previous SUP had an excellent safety record. That's not site-specific, that's just as a point of order.
But I guess it's also, each commissioner has their own opinion, whether it meets that or not, I would believe. So, I guess that's how we look at it individually.
Fact of finding is what Mr. Beaumont is referring to.
No, no, I understand.
And it's on the burden of the applicant.
Right, now, and we need to believe whether that statement provided us individual commissioners which enough to support that or not.
Be it written or spoken, correct?
Yes. So, we have a second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will make one statement. Within this board, there's been some concerns about, as Mr. Beaumont mentioned, funding for someone that is in competition with other folks in the county, and I'm sure that will be something that will be discussed at budget time. So, I would hope that we would engage in that discussion before then to make sure that everyone is satisfied with that. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
We have five ayes and one nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I call Mr. Commissioner White back to the bench.
What did you call it?
Commissioner White.
To the what?
To the bench.
Welcome back, Commissioner White.
Thank you.
Moving on, public hearing in action, PB-18-06 Bayview Sand Mine Request for Use Permit to Operate a 5.04 acre mine located off South Bayview Road, Tax Map 122, Parcel 39, Poplar Branch Township. If all folks that were going to speak to this, if you could come forward to be sworn Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Thank you, you may be seated. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaSisero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight before you is another use permit. This one is for a sand mine extraction use. It is for a property located off of South Bayview Road. The access road is just north of Cellular Lane. It's this property right here. The property owner is Atlantic OBX Incorporated, and the applicant is H.O.M. Development LLC. The request is an extractive use, a mining of topsoil and sand. The current zoning is AG Agriculture. All the surrounding land is zoned agricultural as well. It is in the limited service area of our land use plan, and the existing use is farmland and led, land application of septicage. There is a use permit for property in front of this one for application of septicage. The property size is 27.2 acres, and there is an access road. I said the entrance to the proposed use and the existing septicage application is on the east side of South Bayview Road, approximately 440 feet north of Cellular Lane. Here's a site plan of the mine, the mining area, the mining operation. The affected area is 16.62 acres. 5.04 acres of that is going to be the actual excavation area, which is this area right here, this nice little polygon. This is going to be where the mining operation is going to take place. The rest of the area, the affected area, will include a sediment pond, a processing area, berms, and a stockpile area, the access road, and unexcavated buffers. They have applied and have been issued for a state permit, was issued in March of 2000, last, just past March 2018, from Department Environmental Quality, Energy, Mineral, and Land Quality Division. They will be doing, the de-watering operations are included in their permit, and we've got notification today that their de-watering operation was approved by the state. Water will be pumped into the sediment pond, and
Very good.
It's right here, yeah. The sediment pond is right here, the water, the de-watering will be pumped in the sediment pond, and once full, the water will gravity flow into a ditch system. The ditch system and the outlets are going to be located right here. I'm jumping ahead here, but since I'm there, we're talking about the de-watering operation, it will come down here and follow this ditch line. The blue line on this map is where their de-watering is going to be exiting the property. All this property on either side of this ditch and near where the outlet is, and on either side of the outlet over here, is all owned by Atlantic OBX Incorporated. So, the de-watering operation could impact active wells nearby. The applicant will be required to submit a surety of well replacement at $3,000 per well. There are two wells within 1,500 feet of the project site. The applicant is also requesting a 50% reduction in the buffer, I mean, sorry, in the 100-foot property line setback, as all the surrounding properties are owned by Atlantic OBX Incorporated. All these, all these properties around here are owned by the same owner. We do have specific use standards in their UDO that specifically for, specifically for sand mining operations in the county. The use permit, if approved, is valid for 10 years. They are only allowed to excavate 30% of the total site of that, so it would be 8.16 acres would be that 30%, but their state permit, they're only asking, their state permit is only valid for just over five acres. And just to note that the wetlands cannot, there are wetlands on this property, and the wetlands cannot be included in the calculation. If they stay in good standing with the use permit and their state permit, after five years, staff can approve up to a 40% excavation area. The site would have to be reevaluated to get a definitive area on the wetlands and to be able to see if everything is still in good standing, and their state permit would also have to be amended. Up to 50% of the excavation area, they could expand up to 50% of the excavation area with board approval. They would have to come back before you and ask for that, and they would also have to amend their use permit, and they would have to amend their state permit as well. The UDO use standards also talks to hours of operation. The mine, especially the de-watering, can only operate sunrise to sunset, no Saturdays, Memorial Day through Labor Day, and no Sundays. The pump noise would be governed by our Code of Ordinances. Industrial uses can have up to 70 decibels at the property lines. This would be qualified for that in our Code of Ordinances. The applicant has submitted sound levels based on another mining/dewatering operation that shows low to mid 30 decibel levels at 1,450 feet. 1,450 feet is the closest habitable dwelling, so they think that they could stay within that, our noise ordinance. Staff does recommend approval of this TRC with our staff recommendations, that the 50% reduction of the 100-foot setback in buffer be included, that $6,000 is held in surety for the two active wells, and I think the applicant has agreed to a cash deposit. And then, the entrance road shall be installed with an aggregate surface material of sufficient depth for 200 feet in length and 20 feet wide to reduce areas, sorry, to reduce access road deterioration, reduce dust, and maintain sediment from exiting the site. I can go over the preliminary staff findings as concerns the, that the use will be in conformity to the land use plan, and the preliminary staff finding is that the 2006 Land Use Plan classifies this site as limited service within the Point Harbor sub-area. The proposed use is in keeping with the specific policy of the plan, Policy ID-8 Mining Activities, or secondary impact of mining activities not subject to permit approval by the state of North Carolina may be subject to review and management by Currituck County. Activities to be addressed may include, but not be limited to, the adequacy of roads serving the mine site, visual impacts during operation, and after closing of the mine site, noise and dust considerations, et cetera. And the other finding that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Preliminary staff finding is that the use will not produce any additional burden on schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, or other public facilities due to the nature of the proposed permit. The site will not have any constructed structures, no electrical, phone, or public water requirements, and the applicant states the remaining pond will be available as a water source to EMS as needed. I did forget to mention that there is reclamation, the reclamation for this would be private use, private recreation used for the property owner. Once the mining operation is stopped, it will be reclaimed as the nice, nice pond on the property. So, this is the site, and if the board has any questions for me, I would be happy to help answer- help answer them.
I'm not sure if the question is more for you or for them. The life of the mine, they're anticipating how long? Any idea?
That would be, that would, yeah, ten, the, the use permit is valid for ten years, but as far as their anticipation, that would be a question for the applicant.
And then I have the next one, which we come to, the request for the fifty percent reduction in the property line setback. If we look to the north in that picture, I guess it's page started one, which is here, we've got the ditch line, and part of that in there mixed in is wetlands. Wouldn't it be safe for us to keep that to the wetlands so we would not have to worry about any problems there? To include the ditch, we, we, we scale it back and we're leaving, I think, ourselves open to potential problems, and the same thing when you go to the bottom of the page where you've got a fifty-foot buffer, but you've got woods. So if they ever sell it, wouldn't we be better off where, I, I don't know, I guess this pond that we're looking at, or until it is a pond, you know, it's just, I, I just, does anybody really want to look at? I understand we have a surrounding area.
Mm-hmm.
But I just, I'm concerned there. And then my last part that I'm looking at is the ditch that's owned by OBX in this picture.
This one right here.
Now, when water leaves a place, we can't always say, hey, whose fault is it or whose responsibility as it gets farther along, but has this ditch ever been inspected to make sure it can carry that water? Or we're just assuming that it should be able to carry this water as it's discharged?
Interstate permit requires the main channel to keep flow at all times.
I'm up to the...
See, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if it's, the question's fewer, it should be for them.
Right, and it is part of their state permit process?
Yeah, if we can hold off on that, Mr. Hatton.
Well, you haven't opened the public hearing.
Right, right. Give me a second.
We're getting ahead of ourselves.
Again, these are questions that I've gotten, I'm not sure, I want to make sure I get the right, and if there's ones that you can answer, then I've got you, but...
Well, it was part of their state permit process, and it has been inspected, and they, we received this last week, I think, but they have made conditions about the, about the de-watering and the ditch condition, and, and the state has approved it, approved this.
Mrs., didn't you say the, the ditch is surrounded by wetlands anyways?
There are wetlands on this property, some along this, the ditch area, and there's nice little high areas too. But they, Atlantic OBX Inc. Incorporated owns all of this property that's surrounded on either side of this ditch, both of these properties here to the, by the outlet.
Does the ditch flow through any septic fields, do you know?
I don't think so. There's no, there's an abandoned, one abandoned house on there that's not habitable. There's an old hunting camp back in there, but I don't think there's any active, active septic fields back there.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? With that, would the first applicant come up and please state your name for the record?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for letting me be here tonight. My name is Ken Elliott of Elliott Consulting. I'm here representing the landowner and the operator. The landowner of this use permit request is Mr. Brian Smith. He is here tonight, and he owns, or is president of Atlantic OBX, Atlantic Sewer. And if you need to speak to him, that would be fine, but I have the details for you on this.
Okay, please proceed.
My name is Brian Smith, and I own Atlantic OBX, and we own all of that land, which is, I would say, about eight hundred acres, I think, in that tract. Any more questions for me?
No, sir, not at this time. Mr. Elliott, if you can proceed, that'd be great.
I am also representing the permit applicant for this use permit, and that is H.O.M. Development LLC, representing them here tonight is Mr. Derek Hatchell. And we also have Mr. Bo Owens here, representing. In addition to these gentlemen, I also have a, Mr. Stephen Craddock here with me to provide testimony in regards to land values as part of the criteria for the use permit. As you've already heard, we are here, H.O.M. Development is applying for the use permit to excavate a five point zero four acre sand mine pond located off of South Bayview Road. Anytime anyone in the state of North Carolina desires to excavate a pond larger than one acre, he is required to go through a permitting process with the state and the county. The state permit has been applied for and has been approved, and we have received that document, and as Ms. LaCicero said, we learned today that the de-watering permit has also been approved. We are waiting for that document to be received at this time. The excavation is five point zero four acres. The affected acreage, which includes the excavation, is sixteen point six two acres. This includes outside, acreage outside of the excavation for processing areas, trucks to drive on, stockpiles, sediment erosion control measures. The total permitted acreage is twenty-two point six three acres. This includes the access road coming in, and is the bonded acreage with the state. There are two point two one acres of wetlands on this parcel. After subtracting off the, that acreage from the parcel, our five point zero four acre pond represents twenty point zero two percent of the, of the parcel. As I said, the mining permit has been issued, the de-watering permit, which is a national, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System general permit. This is the federal organization which regulates the discharge of water into the waters of the state of North Carolina, and I'll go into the de-watering process in just a few minutes. All adjacent owners of the parcel, in fact, since Mr. Smith here owns all of the adjacent parcels to this parcel in question, we contacted all adjacent owners within one thousand feet of the permit boundaries to notify them of the permitting process, to let them know what was going on, provided maps. And this, this was part of the state permit process. In addition, of course, we had the community meeting. The community meeting was held at the Currituck County Senior Center in Powell's Point on December twenty-eighth. At that point, we addressed any concerns that any of the local landowners might have had, answered questions. Those questions and concerns, addressings, we extended past that particular meeting. And in fact, it was in the packet that I sent you regarding that, that we did change the de-watering discharge route in response to one of these concerns, and it was, it was a very good idea. We have state and county buffers that we have to deal with. The state buffers include a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer around any wetlands. As I said, we have wetlands on this parcel that we have to stay away from. An undisturbed buffer means there is no mining activity of any kind in this buffer. And then in addition to that, the state requires a twenty-five-foot unexcavated buffer between any excavation and any undisturbed buffers. An unexcavated buffer means an area where there's no excavation, but you can have vehicles driving on it, stockpiles, sediment erosion control measures. The county setbacks, again, the only thing we're dealing with here is a one hundred-foot property line buffer, and we are requesting the board to allow us a fifty percent reduction of that. The UDO does allow a fifty percent reduction of the property line buffers if there is sufficient screening, solid screening, up to six-foot height and twenty-foot intermittent screening. We have, looking at the overheads and the areas, you'll see that we have pretty good screening, but portions of that extend outside of the parcel in question. Basically, we have seventy-nine percent of our permit area perimeter with screening that is adequate. We have twenty-one percent of it, which is nine hundred and forty-three feet of intermittent screening. Therefore, we are requesting the fifty percent reduction based on the adjacent parcels being vacant farmland, vacant parcels or farmland, which the UDO allows with permission.
Excuse me, and he owns those parcels also?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sediment erosion control of our permit area, we are required by the state to have a fifty-foot long solid gravel construction entrance. And in addition, we are going to be putting in asphalt millings, which is refined asphalt, crushed asphalt, not only for the first two hundred feet of the access road from South Bayview. We're going to be filling that in and stabilizing the entire access road back to the, back to the mine site. We will be installing silt fence along a small portion of the access road where it crosses a federally regulated blue line stream that will prevent any sedimentation there. There will be a two-foot tall by ten-foot wide sand berm around all affected areas inside the mining activity area, and then we will also force internal drainage of our affected areas so that all stormwater will be draining into the, into the excavation itself rather than exiting. If we, if we had it the other way and it was exiting, we would be required to have a stormwater permit. With the, with the topography here, it works just fine to be going inside. This is standard procedure. There will be a sediment pond with a berm there also. This will be a six-foot tall berm with a thirty-six-foot wide base to prevent, well, to main, the sediment pond is going to be an above-ground sediment pond. This is standard procedure with areas with high groundwater. In addition, the, the operator will be keeping a weekly log in regards to maintenance of all sediment erosion control measures. De-watering is required, especially in our part of the state, because our groundwater levels are very high, several feet. To, for them to be able to get to their full permitted depth, it's required to remove the water from the pond. Anytime you have a de-watering situation, that de-water, that discharge has to be treated in some way. This, in this case, it will be going into a zero point five acre sediment pond, above-ground sediment pond, and in that pond, any water that comes out of the main excavation, the sedimentation, the sediment is allowed to settle out of it, basically. With careful de-watering to start with, it's, it's fairly clear coming in, but the sediment ponds generally do a very good job of dropping out any sediment. In regards to that, we are required by the state to sample and test and analyze the water coming out of that sediment pond before it leaves or as it's leaving quarterly. We test the water for suspended solids, or, yep, settleable solids, total suspended solids, turbidity, and also pH. So that is a requirement, and my office handles that. Those samples are tested at a state-certified laboratory. We use EnviroCam in Mantio and Wilmington for this. The results are recorded and submitted to the state and also Currituck County, as we have been doing in the past at other locations. We are looking at approximately two thousand gallons per hour leaving the pit. It will not be a twenty-four-seven de-watering operation. It won't be necessary. This is kind of a small pond. It will be leaving the sediment pond through a half-pipe water height control device, and will be entering this existing ditch. This ditch will be leading twenty-six hundred feet to Owens Creek, and that's to Currituck Sound. This is, this is a, an existing ditch, which is in very good condition, has good ground cover. We will not be having any scouring or anything like that because the water flow will not be that hard to start with. I was present with the state when they made one inspection about three weeks ago, and I think they made another one without me being there in the last week or so. But they, they have approved it, and I have, because I have a copy of their inspection report on that. So as I said before, we made a change in our discharge route after the community meeting. Our original discharge route led due north up to Betsy's Creek. We had some residents which live on Betsy's Creek, which were concerned with flooding or, or issues of that type. They were worried about it. They, you know, some residents said, yes, please do it. It'll help clean out the creek that's up there. But anyway, I spoke with one of the residents up there, and he was, this was Mr. Marcus Hyder up there, and their, their house was up at the top of this picture. But anyway, he informed me that, why don't we try it in this other direction? He was familiar, more familiar with that area, and so I took a good look at it, and it turned out to be a very good idea. The, the original northward route, we were going to have to be going through a forested area. I didn't want to really damage that ditch because of environmental concerns to clean it out. There were some blockages in there. This new route is an existing ditch, and it runs along a path which goes all the way out to Owens Creek there, so it is right there. It's very easy to maintain, and we can, we will not have any foliage growing up and blocking it out or anything. Very easy to maintain. So it should work really, really, really well, and again, the state is aware of this change, and they approve of it.
Can I just, real quick, while you're on the drainage?
Yes, sir.
That existing ditch, where he says is blocked by natural debris, is that a hundred percent blockage or just the partial blockage or?
The one that the...
Goes north, as you said, into Betsy, yeah.
It's, it's debris from past storms.
So I mean, so you'll still get some water flowing through there?
No, no, sir.
So you won't, there's no flow at all going to go through there?
No, sir, it won't. We'll make, we'll make darn sure of that.
Oh, okay, well, I guess my question was, without you doing any type of diverting, you would have gotten some flow through there anyways. It's not a hundred percent blocked off?
It would have had to have been cleaned.
You, I mean, okay.
Yes, sir.
And then that twenty-four-inch culvert under the dirt road, is that existing or is that something you had to put in?
We are going to replace it. There is an existing culvert there.
But you're going to put a new one in?
We're going to be putting it in.
Okay, that's all.
Yes, sir. Again, the water coming into that ditch will be monitored for quality before it enters the ditch. And, and also in relation to this, the county UDO requires us to have a performance bond, three thousand dollars per in-use water well, and there are two wells within fifteen hundred feet, both of them approximately fourteen hundred and fifty feet away, and that is the only two we've been able to identify. We have, I have visited and talked with both of the owners there and assured that there would be no problem. This, there should not be any problems at all. You don't normally find a water level drop at water wells that far out. You might see a foot or two drop, you know, three, four hundred feet out, historically Reclamation of the pond and the area... Reclamation of the pond and the area, the state requires certain specifications. H O M Development will be furnishing a reclamation bond to the state of North Carolina on a mine of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. This is to guarantee correct reclamation of the area once the excavation is finished. This will include ground cu, excuse me, ground cover over all of the affected areas inside this permit area, grading and leveling of the land, removal of the stockpiles, removal of the berms. The sediment pond itself will be drained and removed, and the land will be graded, leveled, ground cover installed, and what we'll end it with will be a pond in a field. The septic land application sites adjacent to this well, near adjacent. Our excavation edge will be located two hundred feet from any septic land application fields. This is a requirement for, for the Department of Environmental Quality, the Division of Waste Management. They require, require all of their septic land application fields to be two hundred feet from any bodies of water. Those numbers can be reduced by fifty percent if there is ninety-five percent coverage by ground cover. All of these fields have very strong ground cover on them right now. They've been in use for a little while. Centipede grass, other grasses. We could probably request a reduction from the state, but we wanted to kind of go the high route and keep it a good distance from these fields to, we, we don't feel like there would be any seabeds or anything like that. These fields filter things really, really well. But we just want to take the high road to prevent any possible concerns from neighbors, I guess. Like I say, the, all of these fields are heavily regulated by the Division of Waste Management. I had a site visit from the chief soil scientist in Raleigh, management, management of the fields in our area, Mr. Chester Cobb, and he has visited the site, and I've had several meetings with him and teleconferences regarding this. And he says there are no other, there's no other need on his end for us to do anything different. The North Carolina Division of Water Resources has looked at this. They are the ones that are in charge of sludge fields and septic, they, they have some input on septic fields, and they also have signed off on this. And I have their, their questions. All of these regulations in regards to setbacks for the state are, are per general statute and ordinance, and I have given you those in my package. Traffic, you have information on that. We're looking to add one to two trucks per hour during, during our peak times. Traffic count, the last traffic, that was, it was fine in regards to N C D O T was from two thousand and fifteen, which indicated an average of five hundred cars or vehicles per day. So we're looking at twenty to twenty-one vehicles per hour, and we're going to be adding one or two. Noise. As Mrs. Cicero told you, we did a comparative study with another sand pit that measured noise values, and they were sufficient far as the ordinances with the U D O and the Code of Ordinances, excuse me. And we will be monitoring noise. I'm planning on setting up noise, noise measurement stations at a thousand feet. Our, our closest inhabitants or inhabited residences are fourteen-hundred-and-fifty feet away. The closest parcel to our parcel is eleven-hundred-and-fifty feet. I'm going to be measuring it at a thousand feet. I don't think we're going to be seeing a thing. But I'll let you know, and I'll report those numbers in with our quarterly reports to the county. There's already existing, a locking gate on our sole access road to this area. We will also be putting up no trespassing signs every two hundred and fifty feet, and this is something required in the U D O. The only people who are supposed to be going back there are employees of Atlantic OBX Incorporated. Everybody else is by permission or land entry agreement only. The state has land entry, assigned land entry agreement right now to go in there any time. And of course, the operator and, and his company. State inspections usually occur once to twice a year unless, you know, unless they see a need from a complaint or something like that. Generally, these are unannounced complaints, but I usually have a pretty good read on, on what they find. And if there is any notice of a violation or anything, then it will be addressed. H O M and Hatchell Concrete have been in the mining business for a good while. They have a good reputation with the state of North Carolina mining, so, and to illustrate with this change of the discharge route, that just shows how amenable they are to alleviate problems. The last thing we want to do is harm anybody in any way. Operation hours, as we spoke, we're allowed from sunrise to sunset, and this will include Saturdays except for from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And there will be no Sunday operations. There will be no bulk materials, no hazardous materials, no commercial waste, no garbage construction or demolition waste will be brought into this permit area. We are, we are requesting a ten-year permit from the county. We're anticipating approximately five years to finish this out. The state, however, requires a full two seasons of ground cover growth before they will release their bond to the operator. Once excavation is finished, we start reclamation of the property, and we have to wait for the grass to grow. I believe that's it for now. We're available for questions. Mr. Hatchell, Mr. Owens.
I think you've answered my questions that I had.
That was my plan.
Just, just for informational purposes, for me, is there a limit on how high the, the sand pile can be?
Yes, sir, twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet per county ordinance.
Okay.
If you ask me, you would, please, thank you.
I was just curious how much blockage it was.
Okay, well, the blockage will make-
If we come across with a culvert, we'll be beyond that ditch.
So our outflow will be on the other side, it will be on the east side, not on the backside.
Gotcha.
Well, I was just kind of curious too, because, I mean, it's still going to provide some natural drainage from the wetlands. I was just done though with Mrs. Cicero.
We actually addressed this in the-
Is it a hundred percent blockage or?
We don't know that. We haven't, we haven't evaluated. We were going to use, we were actually going to go about and clean it because it would be a natural drain. It's already a natural drain for the other pieces of property, and we wanted to clean it. But when the conversation came about using it, we said we'd go the other route in technical review. We told, we would move the culvert down beyond that ditch period. That way, he could still, as the landlord, you're not prohibiting him from being able to maintain and keep flow drainage on his properties. So with that being said, the culvert will be beyond that canal or that drainage, if we like to call it.
Sir, before I finish up here, I would like to have Mr. Craddock come up.
Yes.
During whatever portion of that you need.
Okay. Mr. Craddock, if you could come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Craddock. I reside at one oh-two Hickory Hill Drive in Grandy, North Carolina. I'm the president of Appraise N C F U Incorporated, our local real estate appraisal firm located in Grandy, where I work as a state-certified real estate appraiser in North Carolina and Virginia. I have multiple appraiser professional designations. In my career as an appraiser, I performed somewhere around four thousand to five thousand appraisals of all types of properties in an eleven-county area of northeastern North Carolina that I regularly work. I was born in Elizabeth City, and I've lived in Grandy for about twenty years. I have testified as an expert witness many times over my career, and as a matter of fact, I testified before you all last year representing the county in its efforts to expand the Panther Landing Convenience Center in Moayaw. Now to the matter at hand about the Bayview Sand Mine. I was hired by Ken Elliott, who is the consultant that's representing the applicant today, to examine all of the evidence that was provided to the county planning department, to perform my own research and to determine if the proposed Bayview Sand Mine would have any provable negative effect on the adjoining or abutting lands and testify as to my findings tonight. It is my opinion that the proposed Bayview Sand Mine will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. And I'll tell you now how I came up with this analysis. I have reviewed all the information that was provided to the planning department, including all of the maps, the preliminary designs, and all of the other documentation. I performed independent market research, including reviewing market conditions that have and are occurring near sand mines within the county. I performed an onsite inspection of the proposed sand mine property as well as the surrounding properties that the property owner, Atlantic OBX Incorporated, owns. All of the properties they own near and including the proposed sand mine property are zoned A.G. I also performed an onsite inspection of the two nearby residential properties that are within fifteen-hundred feet of the proposed mining area, one of which is owned by Mark and Deborah West, and the other is owned by Lloyd M. Gilbert, Jr. My first inspection of these two residential properties was of one twenty-six Tiana's Drive, a streetfront property that is owned by the Wests. Their home is approximately fourteen-hundred-and-fifty feet from the proposed mining area edge. While I was inspecting the West property, I spoke directly to Mrs. West. I asked her to tell me about her concerns about the proposed sand mine, if she had any. She stated that she previously had been concerned about flooding when the proposed de-watering discharge pipe was heading in a northerly direction towards her property. This route would have discharged the water into Betsy's Creek, which is the northernmost creek that you see on the display in front of you. But now since the consultant and the applicant have changed the proposed de-watering discharge pipe to an easterly route from the proposed sand mine to Owens Creek, which is the lower creek that you see on the image before you, she had no further concerns. My second inspection of these two residential properties was two oh-eight New Bern Road, a creek front property that fronts on Betsy's Creek, the northernmost creek you see, and it is owned by the Gilberts. Their home is approximately fourteen-hundred feet from the proposed mining area edge. When I inspected the Gilbert property, no one was at home, and I did not speak directly to them at all. But from what I have been told, they originally had concerns about flooding because the water would have been discharged into Betsy's Creek where their property fronts on. But since the consultant and applicant have changed the proposed route, it is now going to be going to Owens Creek. During my own research, I requested from the planning department a list of permitted sand mines in the county. Ms. Donna Valova, the assistant planning director for the county, provided me with a list of fourteen permitted sand mines scattered throughout the county from Moayaw to Point Harbor. I examined sales that occurred near these sand mines and determined that the presence of a sand mine in a specific geographic area does not appear to have a proven negative effect on the sales prices of land or homes near them. It appears that the sales prices of properties near the sand mines were similar to the sales prices of properties that were just outside of the sand mine area. Further analyzations of these sand mines that are scattered throughout the county show that existing subdivision properties are selling near them, and new subdivision have been or are being created near them. This further, this further solidifies my position that the existence of sand mines does not appear to prove there will be a negative effect on nearby property values, nor does it appear to negatively affect a developer's desire to create new subdivisions near them, which is important for future development. Let it also be known that there are other existing sand mine operations close to the proposed Bayview Sand Mine that do not appear to be causing a provable negative effect on surrounding properties nearby this proposed location. These sand mines are located to the north and to the west of the proposed Bayview Sand Mine. Some of these sand mines are or were run by N C D O T or other local operators. I also believe that some of these sand mines are county-permitted, while some may not be. This is further proof that the existence of these sand mines, whether they are active or inactive, or whether they are county-permitted or otherwise, appear to not have a proven negative effect on the surrounding property's values. It is my opinion, based on the facts presented, that the nearby septic land application site, S L A S, operation on the surrounding property zone by Atlantic OBX Incorporated, would not have a provable negative effect on the proposed mining operation, nor would it cause any contamination of the nearby groundwater at the excavation site. It is also my opinion that increased traffic coming out of the existing access road that will lead back to the proposed sand mine would not cause a traffic hazard. It is a fact that one can see clearly in both directions for at least six hundred feet when coming out of the entranceway in a straight, unobstructed line, up northward on South Bayview and southward on South Bayview. For all these reasons, it is my professional and expert opinion, which is based on the total amount of evidence that has been presented and from the market research I personally presented to you, that the proposed Bayview Sand Mine will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. I'll be glad to answer any questions for you all.
You've been very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Craddock. With that, I will, is there any further testimony? Anyone else want to come up and speak to this?
Can I say a few words?
No, sir. I'm just kidding. Please come on.
I'm Sammy Smith, and my brother and I have Atlantic OBX. And I just want to tell you, we were born in Spot, North Carolina, if y'all don't know where that is, and we're raised in Harbors, and we graduated from Dr. W.T. Griggs High School. We take Currituck at heart. We own Atlantic OBX, which is a sewage grease operation spreading and hauling transport. We're, according to the state, we're supposed to be the largest, which I don't like yet, largest septic hauler in the state because then everybody's looking at you now, making sure you're setting a good example. But anyway, we're governed by the state. We have, we follow the rules and regulations, even the water quality. So we have two different permitted fields and stuff. But we do take the environment of Currituck at heart. We don't, don't want anything to happen to our land because we had to treat it right. We have, in our woods, our timberland around there, we have turkeys, bears, bobcats, we have like two hundred acres, a little bit, about close to three hundred on the end of Swain's Lane, and then the rest of it is down at Powell's Point. So I just want to let you know that we have Currituck at heart, even though I live in Kitty Hawk. My brother's between Raleigh and here, back for, we can't vote for you, so, because we're out of county. But anyway, I want all of y'all that's running, good luck, and just, I just want to let you know that we are Currituckers, and we have it at heart, and we don't want to damage the land, so, I tell you.
With, with all that that you're hauling, are you sure you're not in politics?
I used to be. I was a commissioner in Dar County for several years, so anyway.
I mean, I saw you when they ended up voting against you. But look, good luck to all of you.
Thank you, sir. And with that, I will open a public hearing. And with that, I will open the public hearing. There's some names on here, but all these folks have already spoken. I don't believe you want to speak again during the public hearing unless I'm incorrect. And is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter? With that, I will close the public hearing, and I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval to approve PB eighteen oh six available mine use permit with staff's recommendations, because the applicant has demonstrated a proposed, the proposed use meets the use permit review standards of the UDO. With the, with these conditions, that a fifty percent reduction and a hundred percent property land setback is approved since the adjoining properties are owned by Atlantic OBX and are developed prior to land disarming activities associated with extractive use of performance guarantee, cash deposit, which the applicant stated that they would do, be established in an amount of six thousand dollars, three thousand dollars per use well, to assure the operator has funds available should the well needs be replaced. The site is accessed, is assessed by an existing unpaved, or accessed by an existing unpaved road, and they were going to provide the aggregate surface material to sufficient depth for a distance of two hundred feet with twenty, what? I know it is. With twenty-two, twenty-foot width on the edge of the pavement to reduce the dust and maintain the sediment on the existing site. The use will not endanger the public health or safety. Landowner owns the parcels adjacent to the mine. The closest inhabitant is within fifteen hundred feet. The mining activities will occur in a natural full growth foliage green eighty feet wide, which will limit the impact of noise. The proposed site is substantially large enough to accommodate the excavation of the size. The current land use is agriculture with land application. The property is owned agriculture and the mining is permitted to use for agriculture. So any district use permit, the proposed use will comply with setbacks and include all UDO requirements, land scape buffers. So the use, the use permit will not injure the value of adjoining or abutted lands, as we heard from Mr. Craddock as an expert witness, and will be held in harmony with all land which is located. Landowner owns all the parcels adjacent to it. The current land is agriculture. The three parcels adjacent to Bayview Mine, as well as two acre tract on the side, Bayview Mine parcel are utilized by OBX, Atlantic OBX, as a septic land application. Mining is a permitted use in the ag zone district with an approved use permit. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan and other official adopted plans. The two thousand and six land use plan classifies the site as a limited service within the Point Harbor subarea. The proposed land is in keeping with specific policy of the plan, policy ID eight mining activities. The use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, does not have any burden on the schools, fire, rescue, law enforcement, or other public facilities due to the nature, nature of the proposed permit. And the applicant states that the remaining pond will also be available as a water source for the EMS as needed. There we go.
That could, that could be the longest motion on record. We have a second for Ms. Etheridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank y'all for doing such a great job in your presentation. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm letting him get out of here. Moving on to new business, board appointments. Ocean Sands Water and Sewer Advisory Board.
Is that a consensus?
It's a planning board recommendation that we recommend, that they, the Ocean Sands has recommended Marty Reagan to replace Carlos Gomez, who had to resign from the board. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Marty Reagan to the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer Advisory Board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Recreation Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a reappointment of Robin Kane. I'd like to reappoint for a second term for Recreation Advisory Board.
And I would like to reappoint Peter Atkin.
I have not had a chance to speak to Mr. Hodges yet to make sure that he was the one to serve against.
So we have, we have two, two board appointments?
He stays on the board until.
Right, he stays on the board until.
So we currently have two board appointments. Looking for a motion or a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board. Any recommendations for that at this time?
Mr. Payment wishes to reappoint Manley West. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the only, I mean, I just, yeah, I just want to do a reappointment for Manley West as well for that. He's, this will be his second term on that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moayak Watershed Service District Advisory Board.
I make a motion that we, this is a consensus appointment to reappoint Charles Ely, Davis Plagman, Wendy Shannon, Ryan Hudgens, and Peggy Lusk.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to county manager's report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Join?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And with that, I'll open a special meeting of the Travel Tourism Development Authority, and I'll hand that over to Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a budget amendment for the oxy tax. After a series of nor'easters that have come through, we had a structural engineer go to all of our public accesses and conduct a, an assessment. Two of them were deemed in, at a stage of disrepair that's requiring us to move immediately to replace them. The budget amendment is, is, tonight is to do that. It's for the public access at Albacore and at the Pine Island Public Beach Access. The other items will, they'll be addressed during the regular budget process, but the budget amendment tonight is to replace those two ramps. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Scanlon? With that, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. With that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Good night.
Have a good evening.